Call to me in order for the February 8th, 2022 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. Regarding current business, any clarification on the consent calendar? Okay, see no request. Next item is an update from, uh, from the city councils, or for the city councils, I should say, for the ad hoc redistricting committee. Staff?
Yes. Mayor Muldoon, thank you, and council members. Today, we're talking about the council redistricting process that we're going through. If you recall, that the council did select an ad hoc committee members of Councilmember Diane Dixon, Councilmember Will O'Neill, and Councilmember Brad Avery. We've met with them several times to talk about draft maps, the process. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dan Campagialo, who's our systems manager, and also with us is our consultant, Justin Levitt, from National Demographic Consultants. One thing to keep in mind at the end of this presentation and after public comments, we would like for the council, if you can, make a selection of which council redistricting map you would like us to move forward. And we will take that recommendation, that map, develop an ordinance, and come back to you in March for another public hearing. Or if you wanted us to make some changes to the map before that. But we do like a recommendation from the city council of which map to utilize for the redistricting. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Campagialo, and he'll go ahead and make the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. I'm just going to go through a few slides here to summarize the role of the ad hoc redistricting committee and that role that it played in the redistricting process. Okay, so first off, the committee was charged with reviewing the census 2020 data results and how that applies to the current map. So the first question is, do the districts need to be moved and to be population balanced? So that's also per the city charter and the new Fair Maps Act of 2020, which amends the election code. So they also were to receive and consider any sort of public input and then report recommendations back, the maps, back to the city council for final adoption. The city charter, Section 1005, states every 10 years following the national census, we need to take a look at the census boundaries to make sure they're properly population-balanced. That includes appointing of a council redistricting ad hoc committee. So some of the characteristics that the committee looked at, that the districts must be fair and logical, they have to be contiguous in compact territories, and also to fair representation. And this year, unlike 10 years ago, we did have an amendment to the election code, which is Fair Maps Act of 2020, requirements that we needed to comply with. And really, the first one was our deadline that we were given to adopt a map by April 15th, 2022. And so we are on schedule for that, to meet that deadline. Also required was to hold four public hearings. And so our first two committee meetings would count for two, tonight would count for three, and then when we introduce the ordinance next month in March, would count for four. And similar to the city's charter in terms of criteria and attributes, is that the districts need to be equal population, or close to it, geographically contiguous, undivided neighborhoods, and basically trying to keep communities of interest together. And then easily identify boundaries, and again, compactness. So after our first committee meeting, prior to any sort of draft map release, we did invite the public to submit their own map to, and we did have some two options on our website. Option one was an online interactive mapping program that allowed them to go in and using the census data to create their own boundaries. And option two is a little bit more of a simplistic option. It was a PDF they can download, print it, and then just do kind of manual calculations, you know, with a calculator on the map. And so these maps, the hard copies, were provided at all of our library branches. So in the course of, between our November meeting and our December meeting, we did release the maps. Two of them went from our consultant, and then nine of them were submitted by the public. Now, I'd like to bring up Dr. Justin Levitt from National Demographic Corporation, and he's been our consultant all along in the process, and he's going to go over the ad hoc committee's recommendation as well as the maps that they brought forth.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the community who are here tonight. We brought four, so essentially what you'll see is that the committee did bring forth all of the maps that we felt were compliant with both the Fair Maps Act and the city charter. This is to kind of provide the greatest range of options, and as you'll see, there are seven maps that comply with all seven. The commission also delivered its strong recommendation to adopt map one over the other six maps. And in addition, the council also asked if we could rebalance map three, which was just over the maximum deviation, slightly too unequal, if we could bring that back into population balance to present that option to you tonight. And so we're going to be basically looking at all of these options briefly here tonight with a focus on that map one recommendation, but also just kind of laying the land. Our current district configuration, as you can see here, is actually out of legal compliance. It's slightly over that 10% maximum difference in population between the largest district and the smallest district. This means at the very least, we do have to rebalance for equal population. And essentially, one of the challenges was that this is really driven by District One. Because of a number of reasons, because of the census, because of COVID, the population along, in many resort areas, tourist-heavy areas, was undercounted in a lot of parts of the country, including areas like the Balboa Peninsula and, you know, areas in the harbor. And so Area One was very underpopulated and needed to gain population. And so that really drove a lot of our process in looking at the different maps. The census counted 85,186 people. This led, if you divide by seven, leads to approximately 12,000 people per district if their population balanced. District One came in at about 10,500. So where do we get additional population from? One of the comments we looked very closely at is what communities are closely tied in to Balboa. And we looked particularly, you know, at the north end of the city, because there's also additional, kind of more beachfront or harborfront communities in that north end. And so minimal changes just kind of takes District One across Pacific Coast Highway at the very north end of the city, right at Huntington Beach, just adding that-
Justin, and that is Newport Shores area.
Newport Shores, right. Community. And the nice thing is that the population work, that we were able to move the entire community and just that community into District One in the minimal changes map. The changes then kind of rotate around into the districts that gained population over the last 10 years, particularly Districts Three, Four, and Five, all gained population over the last decade. And so this is the minimal changes map, because what we're doing is driven mostly by population here. The cores of each of the districts remain the same. And in fact, District Seven is identical in this map to its current configuration, other than a very minor change driven by a change in census geography that doesn't affect any residents. We did rebalance, or we did, you know, we do have the other maps to present tonight. We did rebalance this map, as you can see, 10.1% deviation is just over our 10% maximum. We moved one census block, and we were able to bring that to 9.87 deviation. I'll give you a warning, this is a very high deviation regardless, but we didn't want to make major changes without the consent of the person who submitted the map. So this just was enough to bring it under that 10% deviation. As you can see with the red lines here, they make very substantial changes to Districts Five and Six and Seven, as well as to other parts of the city. We did see other additional maps that were population-balanced. Map Eight, for example, combines Balboa Island and Corona del Mar, kind of refocusing that south of Pacific Coast Highway, or perhaps west of Pacific Coast Highway. That was a theme in several of our other proposals as well. In Maps Five, Six, and Seven, which were all submitted by the same individual, look at dividing at Newport Boulevard. So the Balboa Peninsula would essentially be in one district, and kind of Newport Shores and the north portion of the beach would be actually in District Two in all of these maps. And then in Map Two, we looked at the potential of moving Balboa Island into, along with Balboa, along with the peninsula, to kind of create a harbor-focused district. Although because of population reasons, this actually means taking some of the population from the north portion of the city, west of Pacific Coast Highway into District Two. All of these options are population-balanced, but they are more substantial changes than Map One. And so what we'd like to, you know, I'm here happy to answer any questions you have tonight. As Daniel was talking about, we would love to get any direction on which map to use, or any direction on additional maps or changes you would like to see. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Levitt. Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, real quick, just wanted to say, oh, I'm not, I won't ask questions, thanks. I just want to say thanks to our consultant. This is interesting. And then to the residents that had submitted, thanks. I appreciate that. Turned out that one of the resident that had submitted three maps, I think we ended up finding out he works in demography of some kind at the county. So he actually had a really keen interest on this. I thought frankly, we'd get a lot more public submissions, given the tool that we provided, but we ended up receiving public submittals from, I think, four people. And so the ones that were legally compliant, the subcommittee brought up, but, I mean, look, unless we hear something truly compelling, I think Map One's going to be the, you know, the clear favorite. It was a unanimous recommendation from our subcommittee. So anyway, to the residents that submitted, just want to say thanks for participating. And then to our consultant, thanks for putting together a map that doesn't change very much. And to, let's see, Jim's point, actually, in written materials, appreciated his point about reminding everyone that this is a from district voting instead of by district voting. So everyone still will, no matter how this comes out, will still be represented by all seven city council members. The only difference is this determines who can run from particular seats, so, or from particular districts. So just wanted to say, Jim, I agreed with you, and appreciate you putting that in. Thanks.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just echo Councilmember O'Neill's comments. It's been an interesting process, and thank you, if the gentleman is here who works for the county, who does this work as a hobby. I talked with him after one of our last meetings, it's very interesting. I, too, support our ad hoc committee's recommendation on Map One, because it does comply with all the requirements and has minimal changes, it keeps the community together. Some of the other maps split the peninsula. Two of the maps, I believe, I think that was problematic. Also Newport Shores, for the last seven years I've been on the council, many times they participate in my town halls and such, so there is a natural community of interest. And two, one of the other maps split up West Newport and put that in District Two, I would think that would be problematic to the residents of West Newport, because they feel part of the peninsula. So I do support what the ad hoc committee unanimously recommended, and I hope we can advance it to the next step. Thank you.
If you see other comments from the council, let's go out to the public. Please come forward to one of the two podiums and leave your remarks under three minutes.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I support, endorse the recommendation of the ad hoc committee. A good recommendation. I, my comments are, first, the director mentioned that they had met several times with their ad hoc committee. It would be nice if we had clarification as to whether the committee actually met more than the two times that it met in public, because although it is an ad hoc advisory committee, the impression was it was going to hold all its meetings in public. As at this meeting here today, I think I heard that this is going to be counted towards one of the four mandatory meetings required under the Fair Maps Act of California. And I would point out that if this is a public hearing, the council normally has a section of its agenda set aside for public hearings, and this is not it, so people coming here and seeing this note, seeing this on the study session agenda might not realize it was a hearing. And second, if we're trying to comply with the Fair Maps Act, it requires that the notice and the agenda for this meeting be posted on the redistricting page, which it is not. So I'm not sure this meeting actually counts. And then as to the Fair Maps Act, we heard about the criteria. A point I made to the committee is that the criteria for drawing the maps actually do not apply to Newport Beach, because we are a charter city, we have our own criteria for drawing maps, and the Fair Maps Act, by its own language, excludes cities like Newport Beach from having to follow those criteria, so we're not actually bound by those. And as Councilman O'Neill mentioned, much of the Fair Map Act is trying to equalize population and make sure everybody has equal voting rights, and in a city like Newport Beach, where all the elections are at large, that is largely irrelevant to us. And the comments received by the ad hoc committee, the main ones that I heard were people objecting, as some of the council members were pointing out, to having their community divided, and in a city like Newport Beach, where we have from district, not by district voting, I'm not sure how many people realize it's actually to their advantage if they want power and influence to have their community divided, because then they can field two candidates from their own district or area to have independent seats on the council, and they actually have more influence than they would otherwise. And perhaps we don't want that, so maybe it's good what we're doing, but it's actually to people's advantage to have their community divided. Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no other comments on the item. Okay, quick show of hands up here, the dais. If you support Map One, please raise your hand.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, staff. Okay, on to the next item. Outdoor dining and public right-of-way on Balboa Island and Newport Pier areas. Any conflicts on this matter?
I do have a conflict related to the Balboa Island dining due to real property.
Thank you, Mr. Mo.
Good evening again, Mayor Muldoon and city council members. Simone Jurges, Community Development Director. With me is Dave Webb, Public Works Director. He and I are going to go ahead and present this item together, as there's overlapping departments that kind of have been working on outdoor dining. Just kind of back up a little bit, just kind of outdoor dining in general, we went through COVID, the council granted emergency use permits to allow outdoor dining. Well, all of that expired in December 31st, and it was highly successful. We permitted about 120 of these outdoor dining establishments, so it worked out really well. The problem is that the emergency use permit is no longer relevant, it's no longer in play, and what does regulate is the municipal code, and that municipal code does not work and help us. The emergency use permits don't work for the right-of-way, so it doesn't work for public sidewalks, it doesn't work for public parking areas. So if we look at what are we doing now, is well, for private property, we're granting a limited-term permit, so these are very short-term permits that the municipal code gives us authority to do. So here's a picture of capes, this is, we worked with that establishment, about 1,000 square feet, we have proper circulation that kind of works around that outdoor tent. This is a good example of something that actually works. Again, it is a limited-term permit until we update our parking code, and so far, we've done about 30 of these. And so unfortunately, these limited-term permits don't help us for the public right-of-way, and so it doesn't help us for public parking or our public sidewalk, it's just for private property. And so when we look at what we still have kind of outstanding, that we need some clarification from the city council, is here is our West Oceanfront by the Newport Pier, we still have some outdoor parking using the public parking spaces. And there's, a lot of it's kind of shrunk down, so we still have about maybe five different establishments using outdoor parking spaces, about combined, probably still about 18 public parking spaces being utilized for that area. We, staff does not have authority to permit these, we need some direction from the city council, and just kind of more imagery of what we see currently. This is just shots a couple days ago that we went out there and just took these pictures. And so we've had, and this is off 22nd Street, there's the pizza restaurant there, they have about two spaces there, so combined, still about 18 spaces that are being utilized for outdoor dining. And so if, I know it could be hard to look at the screen, but it's that bird's eye view of the Newport Pier parking lot area, and on the left-hand side, you see this kind of pink shaded lines. Well, that parking lot area, that's under the Coastal Commission's jurisdiction. So I, the city does not have jurisdiction to issue coastal development permit. We spoke to them, we said, how do you feel about outdoor dining in your jurisdiction area? They were mildly okay for a few more months, right? It's a slow season, but really by that mid-May point, they want all that parking restored for the public, right? This is public access, parking is for the beach attendees, beach visitors, it's not meant for private use. So the question for really is going to be for the councils, are you okay with this kind of concept and plan, just kind of continue this till mid-May, and then make sure we kind of pull these parking spaces off? And there's just a question of lost revenue. So we went back and looked at, what is that parking revenue for that general area? And last year was a record year for parking revenue, it generated an enormous amount of parking revenue. We just kind of looked at the average, looking at the peak year, and it's about $441 per month, and that's the average, that's not the peak, that's not the low, that's just the average. And that's $441 per month per space. So we'll have a question for the councils, what do you want us to charge for that use of that right-of-way, if you want them to continue through May? Or do you just want them to go ahead and vacate? And that's come as some of the policy discussion we need with regards to this Newport Pier area. I could stop here, Mayor, or just continue with Balboa Island?
Yeah, let's, I personally would support, we've had a great surplus. Let's just do some discussion, then we might do a quick show of hands on this. Councilwoman Dixon.
Go ahead, what did you want to say, shorthand?
We'll do a quick discussion on this, and then we'll show our hands and move forward to the next.
A quick question, so average revenue of 441 per month in those 18 spaces, is that what you're talking about?
That is the average revenue for that general area, so we allocate that to those 18 spaces.
Did you, do you have a cumulative period, just to do the math, make it simple for us? Is it 12, 12 lunches times 441 times 18 spaces? What does that come out to?
That's about $100,000.
That did not go into the general fund?
Correct.
So that was kind of the free use of public space?
Correct.
Okay. And we'll talk more about the Coastal Commission, for example, does it sound like they would be amenable to an off-season outdoor parking, outdoor dining situation in the off-season?
So that's a good question. If we do want to continue this on a permanent basis, we have to submit a coastal development permit application to the Coastal Commission. And timing-wise, you know, it takes a year and a half, two years to process application. If we're going to lose 20 spaces of that parking, how do we mitigate that parking? Those are some of the thoughts and questions that we would have to kind of answer. We can definitely pursue that on a permanent basis, but we have to apply for a coastal development permit with them, because that's their jurisdiction.
Okay, so just to be clear, the private, many restaurants, and they say there are two groups, one who have parking on their own private parking lots.
Correct, and we've taken care of that through the planning process.
So this is only those in the public space?
That's correct.
Parking, and we'll talk about Balboa Island and the sidewalk, but this is just parking? And it's really just confined to this area?
This area, we have a little bit on 22nd Street, that's as much as we know. I'm sure there's a little bit here and there throughout the city, but, you know, this is kind of our biggest issue that we're trying to kind of address with the council at this point.
How many restaurant owners are part of this?
Well, number of restaurants, probably about five different restaurants. You know, Mario owns a number of those, I don't know who the other owners could be.
I see, okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. So the red area is the Coastal Commission, but there's, you know, there's more public parking that's kind of on the wraparound.
Yes.
Are they, is that Coastal Commission, too?
No, that's the city's jurisdiction. We could issue a coastal development permit. Again, it's going to be challenging for the peak season. We could probably make the findings, because when you have a slow season, you're not, you're not losing anything on the low season, but it's hard to make those findings, council member, during the peak season.
Which findings would we have to make? I'm sorry, I'm-
For public access.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so if we were, if we were going to go back and try to charge through mid-May, I mean, the 441 includes the peak season, and so that number's going to be artificially high for, you know, trying to seek the next three months if we were going to be looking at that. Because even then, you're, I just ran the numbers, 18 times 441 times three is about 23 grand, almost 24. It's probably less than that if we were actually looking at what the revenues would be for the, you know, for those three months, if we did a comparison over the last few years. So I think I probably know where the mayor's going with this. But then, so, yeah, I mean, I would also say, just a quick note, that, you know, I was there yesterday just to go kind of see what it looked like during lunch. Every seat's taken. I mean, the amount of sales tax that this has generated, I maybe didn't offset completely, but sure offset a lot of the parking revenue. So people are using it, people love it, it'd be, it's unfortunate to lose it, but if Coastal Commission's not going to allow us to even issue a permit on it, I guess at some point it has to go away. But the, all right, I'd like to see where the mayor wants to go with that, but I wanted to understand those things before I, before I move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, and Councilwoman Bennett?
Thank you. Simone, so that area that we saw in the picture that's out there, that's in the Coastal Commission, is that a service area for the restaurants, or is it someplace that people get food and then come and sit while they're consuming their food?
No, it's dining, so it is where they sit and enjoy the meals.
So you can tell which restaurants are utilizing that space?
Correct, generally in front of those restaurants.
Okay.
We have Blacky's, Super Panga, Dory's, kind of think those are the ones we saw.
Okay, and also the $100,000 number that you gave us, is that for just the Coastal Commission portion, or is that for all the portions where public parking is being used?
From a public parking standpoint, the, that $100,000, that's just this general area, that's just the specific West Oceanfront. It's not looking at different parts of the city or the peninsula for regard to parking, just this particular area.
So not just Coastal Commission area, but that section down there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, yes, my son, I put, I rented a bike down the peninsula, I'm sorry, Diane, I know you, and we were driving really, we were driving really fast.
Oh.
No, and I put my three-year-old son in the back, and we had a blast, and we rode by this, and the tables are pretty full, as Councilman O'Neill said, but I noticed, because I had to find a parking spot, that the parking lot was pretty open. So I imagine they're just going across the little parking lot and finding a spot. So I think we're still collecting that revenue, and I understand why you might, for accounting purposes, allocate it to those specific areas, but I think that unless it's a, it's a crammed weekend and there's no parking spots at all, they're finding a place where we still capture that revenue. Okay, great, any public comments on this item? Okay, see none, and I'm just going to parse them out, I think it's quicker. For this one, I propose, I support, continue to work with coastal, but let's just do, I guess, a show of hands on that. To allow this temporary use, do you have something you want to say, Councilman O'Neill, before we?
Yeah, sorry, so allow the temporary use and try to seek, collect rent from it, or allow it for the next few months, and then just, it's, it sounds like it's unlikely to continue after, after May.
Yeah, my thought is some people are still not comfortable inside of restaurants, that's, I don't necessarily share that view, but I understand it, so I would just support leaving it for the sake of public access to these restaurants.
I think for the next few months, I agree. I'd put my hand up for that.
The same as continuing what we're doing.
Yes, continue where we're going, yeah. Okay, show hands. Okay.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Can we then bring Mr. Blom back, or no? Can we then bring Mr. Blom back or no? Or is that a conflict? Okay. Okay. Okay, well, let's, let's, let's proceed.
So let's move on to Marine Avenue. A little different character, as you saw on the peninsula, that we're using parking to provide the outdoor dining. On Babo Island, or actually on Marine Avenue, we're using the sidewalk. So to start with too, and I left you a copy, you all have a copy of your council policy, L21. You have a very comprehensive sidewalk standard that prevents guidelines and things like that and how we permit and handle outdoor dining. Got some great pictures here Simone took of basically some of the uses. You've probably walked this. And Marine Avenue, as you can see, is a little more challenging. You've got a lot more street furniture, trees, lights, trashcans, food racks and things like that. And if I recall, I didn't measure the sidewalk, but I think it's about 10-foot wide typically. So in this case, you've got some outdoor dining. It looks like those chairs are kind of partly on private property, partly on public property. You've got cases here with, again, the street furniture gets in the way, gets kind of tight. Really, the struggle here, you're probably going to challenge on your policy, is you've got restrictions on right-of-way clearance. Your, your policy talks to a minimum of six-feet clearance. And when it gets into very busy areas with Babo Island, Marine Avenue would be considered that, it's an eight-foot clearance. So, and again, that's just to deal with the masses of crowds and things like that. Of course, in the winter like this, it's not as busy. Here's, here's on one side where maybe we have a little more room because of street furniture, we can move around. The tables are tucked in, partly again on private property. And again, some small ones here that are not too intrusive, but they wouldn't actually meet the guidelines as you have them laid out. This one's a little tight. Again, if you can imagine, a summer day, it might be a little tight in here. Right now, it looks pretty well. And again, once, I don't know what time these pictures were taken. And, and again, this is another one. This is a public bench here. It's a unique use, they've actually used on the bench. And they actually, the, the policy allows them to use street furniture if they keep the clearances. The other thing that comes into play here, and I don't know if we're going to talk about it in this case, but alcohol and other things, if they want alcoholic beverages or fencing requirements, there's other things that have to be taken care of. So that, again, I don't know what the actual applicant will be for. There might be council policy waivers if we get into this on how, how much do you want to give them and how we can do this. So again, I talked about L21 pretty extensive. We can go through the various components. The biggest one I see as a problem is the, the width, particularly in busy areas. And if they want to do alcohol, there's fencing requirements and things like that in that policy. So the question here is, we allow use? This one, I was going to say too, and you're all aware, Babo Island is just very tight. Everything's tight on that island. So using the parking might be even a little more challenging because the parking, the island's just parked up all the time. That's another option I don't think they've explored yet, if you want it more of a permanent basis, to take parking out or something. But right now, it's on the sidewalk. You could look at updating the policy, maybe just from Marine Avenue, that's an option to, to give it some relief. Again, I, a broad stroke, you'd really want to consider if you start reducing requirements because remember Babo Village had outdoor dining, we have some on Newport Boulevard and other areas. The last outdoor dining permit we did, if you recall, was MacArthur and Coast Highway with the Bungalow and El Ranchito. That, that is now, if you've been by there, it's fenced off, and we worked with them extensively to put permanent outdoor dining there. I'm not sure what the restaurants are looking for today. So just want to bring that to your attention and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Nate. And that's the end of the presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any comments from the, yes, Councilman O'Neill?
This has been awesome. I mean, it just, it's, every time I go on the island, I mean, it's just, it's re-energized Marine Avenue in a, in a great way. And so I would be all in on updating L21 to take into account Marine Avenue specifically. And you'll continue to work with the Babo Island resident, the, sorry, why am I blanking on the name of the association?
Merchants.
Improvement Association. Thank you. The Improvement Association and, you know, the, the merchants on, on there. But I mean, it's, it's been a big deal. And I hear from residents all the time how, how, if you're going to try to find silver linings that came out of 2020, this is one of them. And so I, I don't see a situation where we could do the fencing requirements, for example, on Marine Avenue the same way we did in, on PCH and MacArthur. And also, the PCH and MacArthur has pretty good reasons for requiring those fences considering the fact that we all, you know, we had a car issue there. So that's a different, that's a different environment. But we should just, we should do everything we can to try to keep this going because people loved it. They did. And I, I do, I do too. So anyway, I, I would, I strongly support moving forward on, on bringing back a waiver or not even a waiver policy, frankly, just an update to our council policy that's specific to Marine Avenue, and we should work with the associations over there. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner?
I believe the, the Rothschilds and Bungalow at MacArthur and PCH was done before I got here, so I don't remember. Do they pay any, any revenue to the city for the use of city sidewalks?
So you do have two fees for outdoor dining. If they, if it's less than 100 square feet, they pay $166 a year for the use of the public right-of-way. If it's more than 100 square feet, they pay $313 a year for the use of the public right-of-way. And that's an annual, annual fee.
Interesting. Okay. And then I had just a comment on Babo Island. We got so many emails from so many people who are just thrilled with what's going on on the island. But I just, I think before we start talking about utilizing any parking, we need to balance that they have, a lot of their emails and their customers are from out of town. So it might actually hurt the restaurants if we took away any parking on Babo Island in order to add. So I would want to hear more from them about that before we ever thought about removing any parking on the island.
And I did want to suggest that we were suggesting removing parking. That's just an option you could do, but it's so tightly parked, as you know.
Yeah.
You'd probably hurt the other merchants by taking away parking.
Yes.
So we'd have to really consider that if that was a proposal.
Thank you.
The other thing is the street furniture will be, you know, can we move some of that to put outdoor dining? We can work with them on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what Ms. Brenner said, we, I don't think even, we even, we received even a single letter opposing outdoor dining. So it's a wonderful thing. It really is a benefit of one, if there is a benefit of the COVID, it forced everybody to be outside, and that's excellent. So I fully support it. Noticed in the pictures, you know, we had this matter before the council a couple of years ago, really coming from Corona Del Mar, is we have these newspaper stands that now take up important real estate on our public sidewalks, and there's nothing in them. I just wonder if it's time to look at that again. I know that there, surprisingly, I think it was like four or five years ago, there was opposition by the news companies. I think the residents and some of the store owners wanted to get rid of them, but the newspaper companies, whoever they are today, felt that that was freedom of speech. So if there's a way we can look at other structural impediments that are currently on the sidewalk to free up some real estate, to make the passage on the sidewalk a little bit easier, I would support that. And just the picture you showed had empty news, there's no newspapers in there, and there haven't been in years. They're, they're an eyesore.
So, and again, they're always a little dicey when we talk about newspaper racks. We did go through in Corona Del Mar. We, I believe Marine Avenue, like Corona Del Mar now, is they've gang racked them, they're just not all over. We refine them in certain areas. But there are certain papers that are not as used to being out there, I guess. There's a couple, but maybe we could reduce it. Maybe we could relocate them. But there, every time we touch news racks, we tend to get into that.
I'm not saying to get rid of them. We can relocate them.
I understand that. Just, they, they want to be.
Put them over at the fire station or something on public property. But yeah, we want everybody to have access to news and information. But I, I think we could look at areas where we can straighten up the sidewalks. Also, could you comment, Dave, from a public works perspective? How have the sidewalks been maintained? I know, Councilmember Brenner, you said something about this a few months ago, that it's not really pleasant to walk by and see dishes that are, some of these left and there are dirty dishes on the tables. What can we do about that? And what about the sidewalks? Are the restaurant owners pretty good about keeping the sidewalks clean?
I, I can't speak to probably the dishes on the table and cleanliness. That has to do with how the restaurant runs. And truthfully, that being a code enforcement, it'd be really hard to chase it. They just have to be good characters. And maybe if we get enough complaints, you start talking to them. Marine Avenue is power washed by the city, I believe, in the summer. It's every weekend during the winter, it might be monthly. I think we talked also too about, and it's in your requirements in L21, if they have outdoor dining permits, they're required to clean their own areas. What level of job they do, you know, mopping versus bringing a steam cleaner in, we'd have to talk about that. Certain restaurants generate a lot more stains and like sugars, syrup, cokes, yogurt shops, we have a lot more issues with, with maybe than other restaurants. So we'd have to work with that too. But cleaning is always an issue, you want to make sure. The, the other one that is interesting, we talked about internally, is when you, for instance, you go back to McFadden Square, now that we have those built-up areas, you've seen sometimes they do plywood, how do you clean that? You know, you have, that stuff falls between the cracks, and you get vectors and other things in there. So we'd have to be cautious on what they're doing. The, it's funny, L26 and 21 again, talks about a level surface. It doesn't necessarily approve a step down in the park, and they want a level playing, mainly for tripping falls, because you're in the public right-of-way, you got a lot of people stepping up and down. So if it ever becomes permanent, we'd have to look at that too.
Well, I support it, and I certainly will support it. I don't really support going into the parking spaces. I don't think we're talking about that because they're too.
I don't think the request has been there. I just.
Yeah. But I, I fully support it, and it's wonderful for our restaurants on Babo Island. Makes it fun. It really is an enjoyable community vibe that's created down there. So I support it. Just want, make emphasis to keep it clean, and it's the responsibility of the store owner.
Okay, thank you.
Babo Bars drip more than other bars.
Boy, I don't know. I hope not. They're such a great bar. They're, they're eating so quickly. I don't know why they're dripping.
That's right, yeah. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a home run, you know, and everybody, we've all seen the letters and, you know, we've all been down there. It's great. My only concern is sort of maintaining the ADA distances that are required, you know, in summer and the rest of the time. I think it's tough for someone that's disabled in a chair, and the creep goes on and, you know, they're, they're really having to work through crowds. So do we have any experience with that? Obviously, that's a code enforcement issue. Maybe it's not a big deal. But obviously, in some of those photos, it looks like there might be some pinch points.
I don't know if it's so much our code enforcement, because you want to accommodate them. Someone in a wheelchair going down Marine Avenue in the summer with a very confined space might be a challenge. How much of that, I don't know. But that really gets back to that minimum guidelines. And again, is it different from winter to summer? Summer is just, you know, just really busy on that street. The pictures today, maybe in the morning, is not as bad, and we wouldn't have a problem. We would like some guidance. And again, if we wanted to look at the policy for Marine Avenue, what, what would be a minimum that council would like to change their policy? Right now, it'd be a minimum of eight with the discretion of the director to get more in areas that are really congested. But during your temporary use with COVID, we actually allowed four-foot and six-foot required areas and six-foot and eight-foot required areas, just to help businesses out. And, and it was tight. But can we live with six versus eight? Can we, can we try to get eight where possible? We don't need 10, that kind of stuff. Probably need some guidance. And it does, but obviously, you saw a lot of two-tops out there, tables with two seats. A four-top would be much different. You add another couple of feet. I don't know if we could even accommodate a four-top on, on Marine Avenue. But two tops in a row? Maybe. Particularly where you don't have a lot of street furniture, of streetlights, street trees, benches and things, it's not as much side conflict. We'd have to, it's a case-by-case, and your policy also refers to that. We'd have to look at it by an individual, case-by-case. Some might be tighter than others.
Yeah. So I think we'll get there. We just need to make sure we, we take care of that issue, particularly in the summer when you've got a lot of folks down there. Thank you.
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. Have, have we ever received, since we've had outdoor dining on Marine Avenue, have we received any complaints about people in wheelchairs?
I don't know of any. Tony, do you? Have you? I don't think we've had any specific complaints about wheelchair access.
But what would be then, a wheelchair could get through with what space?
Four-feet would be minimum, typically, on a through. You know, you have some pinch points, but you also have little areas to pull out and things like that. But I, I don't think we'd recommend four-feet as the minimum. That, that would just be very tight. You can't walk two people abreast, and you got people coming at you. You're going to be bumping in. What happens when the server's backing up? The other thing you introduced with outdoor dining, I'd say it's cross-traffic. You know, you don't normally, every exit is going this way. Now we got waiters and people crossing from the restaurant to the tables back and forth. So it just adds a little bit of congestion we have to work with.
Do you want that kind of specificity today about two-top tables and minimum width?
I don't think we need it today, but I think that's something, truthfully, unless we do the policy change, and again, I don't know what that would be, these would probably come back to you as a waiver on, because how many restaurants we talking about on Marine? Five restaurants or something, I heard? Maybe each one, they're all going to be very specific depending where they're at. And I noticed some are, they have the little area on their own site, not as big as a problem. They have a little bar. Some people that just need complete use of the right-of-way, and they want to put it by the curb, we'd have to move some benches. have to move some benches. Maybe that's a discussion that we'd have with you guys to see if that's okay, because the island would want to maybe have some input on that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of island input, any public comments on this item? Please come forward. If anyone else wants to speak, please also go to the opposing podium.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name's Nancy Scarborough. I love outdoor dining. We eat outdoors in restaurants all the times and we, all the time, and we generally choose the outdoor dining because we just like it. I'm fully in support of it. I deal with ADA on a professional level every day. ADA is a law. It's not a building code. It doesn't get enforced by the building department. It gets enforced by the Department of Justice. And what happens is a person in a wheelchair who feels like they don't have access sues someone. They sue the city or they sue the owner of the business or whomever. So I would just suggest that while we're reviewing this, we take into consideration whether or not we're putting the city in a position by having a policy that allows this. And if there are encroachments, we've allowed it by policy. I wouldn't want the city to end up being liable in a lawsuit from somebody that, and I'll mention, in my business, I have clients who call me to straighten out problems and redesign their parking and their path of travel because they are being targeted by people who make a living at this. So there are people who go around and identify places that have problem and they'll just sue every business on the street. So I just want to think about that before we make any serious decisions that cost the money to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. First of all, regarding the flood of letters that you received, all in favor of outdoor dining, which I'm sure is pretty much the sentiment of the city, it would be extremely rare for any issue that everybody is in agreement and on the same side. So I think there might be an element here that the people who own the restaurants encouraged people to write to you today and people who may have a contrary opinion, there are probably very few of those, but they might even not be aware that you're holding a study session about this matter today. So that could be why you're not hearing from them. And the second and last comment I wanted to make, I'm not sure I've heard it correctly, but I think there was a suggestion that the council could consider improving sidewalk access by waiving the fencing requirement. And I believe directors started to say, I could be wrong about this, as I am about many things. I thought the fencing is required by the state alcohol and beverage control, whatever they're called, ABC. I thought that was a requirement for serving alcohol, that you had to have a fence separating the serving area from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you know other public comments on this item? We'll come back to the dais, Councilwoman Brenner.
I had that same question that Jim asked about the alcoholic beverage control and being able to serve on the sidewalk. Can we legally do that?
I believe you can legally do that. They do it over in Corona del Mar, but I believe, I remember reading it, that the fencing is required by the ABC if you're serving alcohol on the outside. It's really to constrain hopefully the people in there and give a denoted area of that. I don't know all the details of it, but if you're not serving alcohol, I think a lot of people serve breakfast and stuff, I don't know if the fencing is purely required. I think it's, it might be required if it's off away from the building, but against the building, I don't think so. I have to read that again, unless you know off the top of your head, Tony.
Do we know whether the restaurants are serving beer and wine or alcohol at those sidewalk tables?
I'm, to someone's case, I probably, I don't know. They look like some of those are nighttime restaurants. You tell them, I'm pleased, I'm sure they're serving wine. And again, your direction under your emergency program might be different than your permanent direction under your own policy.
I think we just need to know whether we're putting ourselves at any kind of risk, you know, or if there's something that we need to do to make sure we're protected in that case.
I believe we relaxed some of our alcohol laws under the emergency declaration. You could take cups out and to-go, things like that. So in that character, we might have said, you can serve out there. But again, to your policy, if we're going to do something permanent, we'd want to look at that and they'd have to comply with the ABC rules.
Right. And, you know, I think one thing that we do need to consider, this is specifically Babal Island and it was the peninsula we were talking about, but in areas where the restaurants' parking is adjacent to homes that are close by, I think, you know, I don't think this is a blanket endorsement that every time someone wants to expand parking lot, it's a good idea. Some of those we really need to look at individually and see whether it's going to impact the neighbors. So, but in these cases, I don't think there's any impact to the neighbors. The neighbors all seem happy about this, although there may be some, Jim, that didn't think to write to us about it, but we heard from no one. So, okay, thank you.
And just for council's education, page seven of your policy under design standards talks about barriers. Barriers are required by ABC requirements and that's for any alcohol. And if you also put your seating out by the curb, barriers are required because it's not adjacent to the building per the policy.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, I was just going to say real quick, we, so council policies are not law, so we can't waive law. So if an ABC requirement exists, we can't waive it using council policy. So I guess my, I understand what you're saying. You're saying in our council policy, we're talking design standards, not modifications to requirements from ABC.
Right. You couldn't waive it. If it's required as a barrier for alcohol, it's got to be there.
Right. Okay. All right. Yeah, that's, obviously, I'm not asking for, I don't think we should be waiving laws that we can't waive. The, let's see, what was the only other thing I was going to ask? That was one of the things, sorry. Just a second.
Did you get it? Good.
No. Who's on this issue? It's okay. Thanks.
We'll come back to you. Councilwoman Nixon.
Well, I was going to follow up on the ADA. Nancy Scarborough made a very important point because we all know about those kinds of lawyers out there, class action lawyers or what have you. So we want to be careful that we are not, and anybody who has had experience with a friend or family member in a wheelchair, you know that that access is absolutely critical. So, and I've been through that. So I would want to make sure that we allow for that. And just to be clear, right now, the way we are operating, are we at risk in any of these areas? I know the state obviously has extended this in an emergency. Now, if this, which occurs to me, too, if the state rescinds its emergency, does our emergency treatment of this continue or how do we deal with that?
That'd be a good question, but being an engineer, I'm going to look over to Aaron. That's more of a legal question, I believe.
Yeah, so we granted these for a limited term, so I think this is looking at more of a long-term solution. But the revocation of the emergency order by the governor wouldn't impact this issue because we gave them for a specific term. I do think that we required in all of the permits that they maintain ADA access and we threw an indemnification provision into those to ensure that if they are not abiding by it, that that's the responsibility of the business owner.
Well, okay. And as we go forward and looking at the policy amendments on the design standards, I think we should, just because what we've seen, granted it's a temporary basis, how outdoor dining structures have been created is kind of incongruous. I mean, there's no conformity and everybody does their own thing and different kind of barriers. I would like to see some, some type of minimal design recommendations just to make sure that the encroachment onto the public areas is, you know, so there's a straight line on that barrier, whatever it is, if it's an invisible barrier or whatever, just so the tables aren't jutting out and it just makes walking difficult. We should have some standards. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. For this item, what direction would you request?
I think we've got general direction to, you'd like to proceed and trying to find a way to make the policy work with the outdoor dining flavor that's there. Make sure we handle the ADA and pedestrian access issues, safety, work with the community. I think we can work around that. I would just note to Councilmember Dixon, you're probably looking at a minimum of six feet then. I'm thinking of four foot walkway for the, you've got an oncoming wheelchair, you're going to not be able to block it. You're going to have to be able to walk around it. So even though it's eight, maybe we could get down to six in some areas, but I don't see it going less than that with an ADA issue. But we can surely work with the merchants on that.
Thank you. Great. All right, on next item, this is a, I think we have a presentation item on the OC Mobile Response Unit program called Be Well. Staff, do you have an update for us?
Yes, we do. And I'm going to have our homeless services coordinator, Natalie Bosmaja, present that here on our, the latest on our Be Well Mobile Crisis Unit that we're very excited to bring on board.
Thank you. Go ahead, Natalie.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon and members of the city council. I'm Natalie Bosmaja, and you're homeless services coordinator. We're very excited to announce the launch of our Be Well Mobile Crisis Unit. We have the van outside for you and the public to view it today. I would love to introduce Alyssa Guerrero. She is our supervisor for our mobile crisis unit. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Muldoon, councilmen and councilwomen. I thank you for this invitation to introduce myself and present to you the new Be Well Hope team that will be in Newport Beach soon. I am Alyssa Guerrero. I have a master's in clinical psychology, license in marriage and family therapy, and eight years of crisis and grief counseling. I will be the new supervisor for the Newport Beach mobile team. So I'm very excited to bring our Hope team to Newport Beach where I can see how our skills and experience can be utilized in helping individuals dealing with mental health and homelessness. Our team is very passionate about meeting the needs of the individuals that we work with. We will work closely with the police department, fire department, and city services such as CityNet and homeless liaison within the PD. Our collaboration efforts will be made by our mobile team as well as our individualized case manager that we have specifically on our team. Part of our mission is to provide a compassionate first response model to get people the right help at the right time. Our launch date is set for February 14th, which is next Monday, and we look forward to serving the city, its residents and visitors. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much. Do we have any other presenters on this item? I don't think so.
No, sir.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Brenner.
Alyssa, I have a question about what our capabilities are with this van. If we have someone that we believe has mental health issues and is behaving in a way that is detrimental to themselves or to others in the community, can that person be required to obtain help?
No, no one could be required to obtain help against their will. With our team, we will collaborate with the PD and fire depending on the situation. If someone is in, you know, in hurting themselves, wanting to hurt others, in danger, they could be put on a hold, which is not something that our team does. But we will be working with PD and fire in those cases. Our team, on the other hand, will be working with those who do want the help and who are willing to get the services. So we are all a voluntarily based organization.
Is there not a conservatorship option if someone really is mentally ill, though, that can be called upon?
I think that's more a case by case basis that we would have to handle at the moment.
Okay, the main reason I'm asking, we've got, it may be more than one, but at least one person in Corona del Mar who's been stepping out in front of cars. And I don't know, I mean, how is this going to improve our ability to deal with that?
I'm assuming, are they housed, unhoused? It all depends on the situation.
Yes.
Housed?
They're unhoused.
Unhoused, okay. Yes. So we can always go out there, introduce ourselves. Sometimes it takes a couple of times to build that rapport with the individual. But we will be working with the homeless liaison, of course, within the PD, who will introduce us to that individual and hopefully we will be able to work with them to find, you know, a great care plan and treatment plan for them. It really depends on where the person is. If they're stepping into traffic or oncoming traffic, that is them being a risk to themselves, which we would have to handle at that case, you know. But like I said, case by case basis, it does depend on multiple factors. You know, if we see it, if others see it, you know, others are concerned, get multiple calls about it, you know, the PD does. So it does depend on case by case in that situation.
Okay. In your experience, because you did work with the Be Well van in Huntington Beach, do you have a, just a round number for what percentage of the people that you came in contact with were willing to go and get help?
I would say majority of the people that we come into contact with do voluntarily want to seek help.
That's exciting.
It is.
All right. And we're still going to be dealing with people who are concerned about those who don't want help and won't go. And so I was hoping that we had greater ability to deal with those people because that's where the majority of our complaints come from, from our residents.
And that is one reason why we do have a case manager on our team, because that person will be able to continue to do follow-ups with the individual and hopefully build and establish that relationship and rapport to get the person, you know, understand, you know, their, all of their different options, their choices, and how, you know, all these different options and choices can help improve their life.
I think that all of the council members are dealing with citizens who are a little bit tired of hearing about how we're building relationships with the homeless. So it's really important that we find a way to make sure these people get the help that they need in every way possible. So thank you. We're welcome aboard. We're really happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
I thank you, Mayor. Well, yes, I concur with what Councilmember Brenner just said because we have been waiting for this day. This is so significant that we can start with Be Well. We're very proud that we will be, you'll be working with the city of Newport Beach and it's an extremely important element of our homeless program to bring people in off the street, into shelter, into getting the care that they need. I'm concerned, just listening to your words, however, we're really trying to help, we are trying to help. Our goal is to help people with mental illness. I'm not a psychologist, you are. I don't know the likelihood that all mentally ill people can rationally decide that they want help. And they may need their, they may not be on their medications. They may need additional medications. So I, too, am surprised we're still at the precipice of solving our homeless problem, but we still cannot do any more than build relationships. And we've been talking about relationships now for several years. I know, I'm not suggesting anything other than lawful encounters with homeless people, of course. My goal is to get every person who needs help. I'm just concerned that you, what do you do when someone resists your overtures and your conversations and they potentially are a threat to themselves or other members of the community? And then the police, we know that the police certainly could come and bring that person in, but that's just for 24 hours. So this is our only, our last hope to help people who desperately need help and who most likely are the chronic homeless. I just hope that in the next time we have a report on how we're doing, we're still not dealing with the 20 or 30 chronic homeless on our street. Can you give me hope that we will be dealing in a very serious and expensive way? We're spending over a million dollars a year of taxpayer money on Be Well. I want, personally want, and it's a lot in my district, I want these people to be helped and as constructively as possible. So give me some hope that we're going to be, and this is what the residents want, just as Ms. Brenner said.
Yes, I understand. You know, that's, that's our goal and our mission as part of the Be Well Hope team in Newport Beach and all the cities that we are working with. We, that is our goal, is to get these people housed and to get them more shelter and more long-term care. And that's what we're going to be striving for and working hard for. And we will be collecting data, which we will be able to share with you guys as well.
Okay, good luck. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and I would like to ask the question that I asked in writing. I could, again, be wrong as I often am, but my impression when we first heard about this was the Be Well program-
Yeah, if you could let go of the mic. If you let go, it won't make that. Yeah. Thank you.
My understanding was the Be Well program was not solely about homeless individuals, but was available to anybody in Newport Beach. So if a resident was having some sort of mental crisis or a family member, this is an option that they can call. I don't know if they call 911, how they get in contact with the Be Well service, that's the first question. And number two, if they called 911 and the fire department came out, they would be charged for a paramedic visit unless they have the paramedic insurance program. So am I correct that the program is available to anybody? How do they get in contact with it? And is there a charge if they call? Thank you.
Good questions. I'll have them answered. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Jenna Downs. It's my first time speaking to you, so forgive me. My husband and I are homeowners in Corona del Mar and we recently just had a couple of issues this weekend with the homeless. We walk our dog every morning by the beach at 6:30 in the morning and there, down the street on Poppy and PCH, right by Botanical Floral, there was a homeless man that was very aggressive. He had clearly been sleeping in the breeze way behind Botanical Floral and you could hear him from blocks away just screaming and raving and ranting. I'm not sure if he's the guy who jumped in front of the cars or not. But to say that I didn't feel safe was an understatement. I'm glad my husband was with me. I did call the police and it kind of, we hid around the corner and I was just curious what the protocol is timing wise for them to respond to anything like that. We waited for, I think it was six or seven minutes and hadn't seen anybody by that time and we just continued walking our dog. And then we're also seeing homeless people on the beach in the mornings. And, you know, I just really, really want to do whatever we can to know what the protocol is, just for so many reasons that you guys already know about. But I just feel like it's multiplying and there's a lot of us that are just really concerned and we'll do whatever we can to help. We just want to know what we need to do. So, thank you very much. My name was Jenna Downs, if I didn't say that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else who'd like to speak, please come forward. There are opposing podiums you can approach.
Hello, my name's Amy South and I live down in West Newport by the River Jetties. And they're starting to multiply like rabbits in front of our house and our parks where the kids play. I walk my dog in the morning and during the day and late at night. And I'm seeing just camps of people in the park where the kids play. I've seen a gentleman taking off his pants and throwing the trash cans around. And I've called the cops on him. They came, talked to him, they left him. I had another situation where there was a guy, looked like he had a medical bracelet on. He was entering people's property and I was calling the cops on them. They came and spoke to him. They released him and he was back again. Camps in front of our house, even sleeping on our neighbor's patio. And it's just a big issue. I mean, I would like to know what we can do to help and get them off the streets, but they're getting closer and closer. And it's just, it's overrunning our neighborhood where we live. And we're just over it. And we don't feel safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor, my apologies. My name is Anthony Delgado. I'm actually the director for mobile and just wanted to respond to some of the points that came up, if I may.
Any other public comments on this item? Okay, so you may, sir.
Thank you. As I mentioned, my name is Anthony Delgado. I'm the director for the Mobile Crisis Response Team. I was selected for that team because of my many years' experience working with this particular population. And I mean homelessness, substance abuse, anything related to crisis in the street and police collaboration. I worked for the county of Orange for many years. I started out their outreach team, worked with PERC, developed their CAT team, all those prior to my retirement. And I just want to say that in all that experience, this is not a problem that any one entity can approach and solve. The beauty of this particular program and why I was so excited is that we're embedded within every city. So as Alyssa mentioned, we get to know the city. We get to know the problem areas and who those problem folks are. We start to develop some sort of plan. We, you know, some of the issues that were mentioned were about aggression. A lot of times homelessness is not the sole push for that. Sometimes there are substance abuse issues, mental health issues, some are legal, some are psychiatric. All of those we determine and try to address and find it to some sort of solution. We understand that our responsibility within the city is to stop the cycling and the revolving door. We also, as a mobile response team, don't work in a vacuum. We're attached to a campus, a campus in Orange and one that is soon to open in Irvine. They're just cutting ground. But there's a continuum of services within these entities and we work directly with them when we identify a client. You know, if someone gets put on a hold here and is taken to a CSU, and I'll name ETS, a county CSU, they're held there for a short time. Sometimes making decisions about who's most acute in coming in and who can I let out, even if they're still symptomatic. So police is often frustrated to see the same people back on the street the same day, maybe because there was people more acute coming in. That new campus not only offers capacity, but it also offers a better continuum of care. We have a whole continuum of substance abuse units up- We have a whole continuum of substance abuse units upstairs, from a residential to a long-term residential, and our job is to focus on those individuals and create a plan. We network throughout our own system to make sure people stay engaged. It's not a disconnected service, that we pick somebody up here, we take them somewhere, we don't know what happens. We very much try to stay focused and try to bring some resolution to the issue. The other question, yes, we do work and respond to issues in homes as well as on the streets. Oftentimes, the police officers are not the best to respond to those situations. In other cities, the officers have called us and say, hey, Tony, we really escalated this one, can you come? And, you know, we don't write holds, that is true, maybe a shortcoming, but in our experience, what we found is we've developed the other muscle. We're really good at de-escalating situations and getting somebody to trust us enough to go voluntarily. With the homeless, a lot of the issues are alcoholism, substance abuse. We have a sobering station, a place where they can just go spend a night, you would think. Take a shower, get something to eat, sounds pretty benign. We're supporting homelessness and alcoholism. That's not necessarily the truth. There's people who are recovering in their own recovery there that engage these folks and say, hey, I was right where you're at yesterday. How about trying the detox? We have a detox upstairs, we have a whole continuum of services. So I just want to offer that hope. This is something we've been doing. In my experience with the county, I was often frustrated because I had to look at a specific target population. Are you acute enough? Are you ready to hurt yourself? Because if not, I can't do anything and I walk away. Do you have insurance? Because if you have insurance, then you got to call your insurance company. There was always reasons why I felt my hands were tied. And in coming with Be Well and starting up this mobile unit, we respond to everything. We are an aid to the citizens in your community, your constituents. We want to respond to all of them. We want to offer the right response at the right time and the right team, the right care. So our teams are an EMT, an LPT, a nursing-type person with a clinician. And the reason for that is that we provide a holistic lens as a way of looking at a situation. In other cities, I've responded to senior citizens home where there's a 90-year-old guy wanting to fight everybody in the place, and five police cars show up with these big guys with vests on, and that wasn't needed. I remember on the last one I responded to, I'm looking through my clinical sort of lens and thinking of dementia, Alzheimer's, and the EMT that was with me said, has anybody checked the sugar level? And that's what it happened to be. With just, his shirt was off balance. And that was resolved. Police went away, we saved their time, we save a lot of situations. So I just wanted to offer my experience and just a little bit of hope for you all. We are the right team for the right situation, and we're hoping we can prove that to you.
I can relate to the sugar level. Thank you. Counselor Brenner, she has other questions for you, I think.
Could I ask you a question? So is there going to be some cross-training going on with the police department and your team so that they really know how to utilize your services?
I certainly hope so. We have some plan now for the second week of our orientation to be collaborating. Oftentimes, I'll just tell you the truth, in many cities, people were standoffish about what we could do, about what our capabilities are, and it took a short time for them to notice that we were getting better responses in situations. People were calling a lot more pleased about the response. Elisa can attest to how many children we've responded to in homes with family who had no one to go to. They have private insurance, nobody's coming to your house. Situations where we needed to go back and help the family with resources. You spoke about conservatorship. That is a process, a process that we're very familiar with. So rather than taking someone and hospitalize them against their will three or four times, we're going to look at options. There's Laura's Law. Can the family call Laura's Law and make a recommendation, make a referral? There's also public guardians office. Is conservatorship an answer? We start to work with families to put those things in place, and there are often things missed. When the county comes out, and not to put down the county, because I'm a county guy myself, I retired from there, I love what they do, they are limited by their funding. Their funding is Mental Health Service Act, and all you can focus on is the chronic and persistently mentally ill. Anybody that doesn't meet that threshold, you have to wait till they get worse, which is sad. Many, myself, I was excited about this team because they would come to my home. I have children. I also encounter these crises where I could use the team. So in any event, yes, we...
I think that's kind of the crux of it for us, is that we feel good about what we've done to help the homeless that are capable of turning their lives around and, you know, actually want our help and work with us. We're just, we've been frustrated by the people who didn't seem to want our help and didn't seem to have, I can't imagine some of these people being capable of really understanding what they're going to be able to access. So that's my biggest concern, is the conservatorships, how we do get to people that obviously need our help, but don't recognize that they need our help.
Yeah. And now being embedded and being able to see those individuals and identify them over time, we put a plan in place and we start work. That's why we have a case manager. That case manager focuses on making sure that that individual we encountered yesterday, that we were able to defuse that immediate crisis, doesn't just stay right there where he's at waiting for another crisis. Let's do something. And we've had some success.
So it sounds like we shouldn't be telling people that on Tuesday, this problem is going to be solved. It starts Monday, but it's a process, but we hope it's not a very long process because some of these people really need help.
And we totally feel your frustration, your stress. There's nothing more disconcerting for us than going back to the same person over and over, and our hearts goes out to them, but the point is they don't want anything. Sometimes they're not capable of making that decision, but they don't fit into any one pool, if I may use that word, for an exit strategy, whether it's a hospital, a jail, crime, you know, they don't fit. So there's nowhere to really get them help, and we try to engage those people and see what we can do. Come up with a plan. We've contacted families out of state, gotten family members to engage someone that was here, who they trusted. We come up with all sorts of ideas and plans to make sure we move people forward.
Your work sounds amazing, so we're really excited to start to see the results.
We thank you for the opportunity, and we also know the chance that all of you are taken on us, and we don't take it lightly. So we will be stepping up and seeing what we can do to support the community. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Just real quick, quickest question. How, if this is more broad to the entire community to have this kind of access, how does a resident seek that help? Is there a telephone number? We need to broadly communicate? And how to call 911? What is the best way?
I would allow that is it.
911?
Councilwoman Dixon, the police department would be the point of contact through dispatch, either the emergency 911 number or the non-emergency line. The Be Well Team will have an office space at the police station on Santa Barbara Drive. They will also be complementing CityNet. CityNet does not provide mental and behavioral health resources, so this will be a collaborative team effort. If it's somebody CityNet's already working with and they've been missing the mental or behavioral health component, Alyssa and her team can then collaborate and take that person to the next step of care.
Okay, I urge that we communicate this broadly throughout the community, just so everyone knows. So good, well done. Look forward to some good results. Thank you.
So much for that.
Thank you, and it's available to anyone who wants to call, correct? Any citizen?
Yes, any citizen, visitor, or person experiencing homelessness, anyone in our community.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an item regarding Trellis International Community Impact Team Program staff.
Tonight, we want to report back on a grant opportunity you guys recently approved with Trellis. And tonight, Teresa Schweitzer is here tonight, our administrative and finance division manager, who's going to have a little PowerPoint for you. And then there are members of Trellis who would like to come up and say a few words. So Teresa, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. As Dave mentioned, my name's Teresa Schweitzer. I am your Public Works Finance Administrative Manager and here to present to you an update on the Trellis International City Grant. To provide some background, back in September of last year, you approved a $30,000 grant agreement with Trellis International. They're a nonprofit organization located in Costa Mesa. They work with homeless and housing insecure individuals. Specifically, their Community Impact Team is a voluntary service program, and their participants gain work experience and skills through projects that they work on. The grant is a one-year commitment where they will provide eight or more work projects each month. They have three to four volunteers at each project and one supervisor at least, sometimes they even have more. The different types of projects that they work on are trash debris cleanup, some, they could do vegetation trimming, graffiti sticker removal. So for an update, we are four months into the agreement, and they have successfully completed 36 projects at 17 different locations throughout the city. They have provided 700 volunteer hours and have collected over 200 bags of trash. Some other notable community projects, activities that they have done, the Pacific Coast Highway from River Jettie to Dover, they clean signs, benches, electrical boxes, and at the Civic Center, they cleaned handrails, sign maps, the electrical vehicle stations. At Lido Bridge, they cleaned rails and walls. They have found four homeless encampments in their projects and have collected over 25 large items, furniture, wood, shopping carts, and have encountered multiple residents who have been encouraging and thankful for their services. This is a map of the city that shows where the different project locations. You can see that they are spread throughout the city. I know up in the right-hand corner, it is small, but to the right of the location, it would identify how many projects we've had at each location. And now I am happy to introduce Terry Moore from Trellis, who will say a few words and give you some project highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Grayson staff. It's nice to be back before you to be here to kind of report on what has really been a terrific success, I think. We have encountered nothing but great support from the city, from the residents, and from Dave and his staff as well. Before I go any further and look at these slides, I wonder if you'd indulge me for a moment to introduce a few people. Ian Stevenson, who is the founder and director, executive director of Trellis, is over there. Next to him is my boss, the young and handsome Scott Ziegler. And then, as you may guess, these people in the blue shirts are with us today, too. Typically, if you look at some of the pictures, you'll see that there may be a number of people in yellow t-shirts, yellow team t-shirts or vests. There may be one person in a blue t-shirt. Those are people that we have elevated into leadership positions, not willy-nilly, but because they have deserved it. They've earned elevation into a leadership position by their excellence, their integrity, their commitment to what it is we're doing. And I'd like them all to stand up. We're not going to introduce them by name, it's a matter of confidentiality, but if you guys would stand, it's because of these people and their leadership that we have been so successful, honestly. So, all kudos to them. And you'll see them as we go through some of these slides. And just on a personal note, if I may, as part of the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee, we've been talking about the Be Well Van for some time now, and it's just so exciting to see it here. So that's just, that's a highlight for me for today. So if you're looking at some of these slides, you will see that our projects have really covered the gamut. In fact, today's project that Scott managed went through three of your districts. Our team walked on PCH from the River Jettie to Dover, collecting lots of trash. I don't know how much they collected today, but as you can see in some of these photos that we're going to go along, it's an enormous amount. I estimate that we've collected somewhere over 2,000 pounds of trash, just in four months. And that's not including all that terrible stuff on the beach that we got with pitchforks. That was really, that was a really difficult project. I can attest to that one. So we look forward to continue. We have, I think, another seven months on this current grant, and hopefully you will see that as successful as it's been and the residential kind of support that we're getting and the good reports, that we will look forward to coming before you again for a renewal or an increase or whatever. So if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer it. Ian or Scott or myself would be happy to answer any questions. Or Dave, if you have anything else?
Actually, I just want to add to that and thank you. This program has been very successful for us, as you know, and I want to credit Teresa over there. She's such an all-star. She's kind of taken on our volunteer program, so this is one of her several that she's trying to do to help get more staff out there, get more resources. So Terry and his organization has been one of those, and they've been wonderful to work with. Our other arm, Micah Martin, and his group works day-to-day with them. They program them, they get them started, but what a great program where they're self-sufficient. We kind of tell them, we give them a map, go this area, they take care of it, everything's done, they bag it, they kind of report in. Doesn't take a lot of supervision because they provide their own supervision. So really good value the city's getting here, also helping close that loop because we're providing that other thing about giving job training back to some of these folks, getting them supported. So I'm excited about the program. We're looking forward to going. We're actually, Teresa and I were talking earlier about trying to expand it beyond some trash cleanups, maybe there's some other things of higher levels that we can start doing with folks to get some mutual benefit. But thank you for all your effort on that.
Thank you. Just one more thing I should mention to you, and this goes back to when the council approved a partnership with Costa Mesa in the bridge shelter. Almost all of our team leaders and a great percentage of our actually team members are now, now or have been, in the shelter. And, you know, we've been able to get several of them housed. Three of our people, within the first two months after doing a project, were hired by the people for whom we did the project, a business, and they're working full-time now. That's the goal, that's the dream, and it seems to be working well. So we look forward to greater success, so.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
This is such a great program on so many levels, and I'd just like to speak directly to the folks that are out there doing it. Thank you for showing up. I think, one thing, you make a difference, and at the end of the day, you make an impact on our community, and I think everybody's grateful for that. And it's, I think it's a really, really great program Terry put together and the leadership's put together. And there's a lot of pressure on our town from visitors and residents, with a lot of people, a lot of traffic, and so it's really important to us to keep the town beautiful, and we do the best we can, but we don't have the resources, frankly, to do all that's needed, and this is where, you know, you really make a huge difference, I know, for our Public Works Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, I'll just echo that. Thank you. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, your team. Thank you, the men and women in the blue shirts and your successful leadership in making this program successful and providing a vital service to Newport Beach. I remember, Dave, when you discussed this in the budget process last spring, you said that you had some ideas about some volunteer, nonprofit type of work that could supplement how we keep, the work that we do to keep our city clean. This is fantastic, and I'm grateful for whatever you're doing across the city all the time, and if it can be expanded into some other areas, thank you. We're helping people help develop their skills, get them back on the road to successful lives, and they're already proving that to themselves and to all of us, and we couldn't be more proud. It's a perfect, perfect situation. We all benefit, so thank you.
Just as a side note, Terry, do you know how many people have gone through your program and are now permanently employed? Because some of the backstories you've shared with us that they've gone through and now they're working full-time. You, as the council, have helped complete that full cycle from... You, as the council, helped complete that full cycle from coming off this read back in.
Well, three so far. And it's been remarkable. It's not just that they were hired, it's that immediately after having done a project at a restaurant, as an example, the owner would call me and say, "I want to hire this guy." How do I go about that? And you just go, "Well, you call him. You know, we'll give you his number," and from that point on. And the remarkable thing is that each one of these people that has been hired continues to come back and be an example in our Saturday meetings. They don't have to, you know, they're not getting work projects from us, but this is part of their team, it's part of their community, and they want to give back to our community. So they come and they're there, you know, we can ask them questions, "How is it? How is it working? How is it, you know, how has your life changed since you've been given this job, given this opportunity?" And it's only because they had that first opportunity to go and maybe wash dishes. And now, you know, the job has become something maybe kind of significant for them. So it's three so far. We hope that in the near future, there will be several more. That's kind of something that we're looking at. And, you know, who knows, maybe at some point, the city of Newport Beach will hire some of them, too. That would be a lovely thing. In fact, that was mentioned the first time that I met with Carol and Natalie, and Carol said, "You know, it'd be great if sometime they could trade in their yellow t-shirt for a blue Newport Beach t-shirt." So that's, that would be the goal. That would be beyond the dream.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
Oh, yeah. Councilman Brenner? Oh, Terry, wait. I know you were cleaning the parking structure here at City Hall last Saturday when I talked to you, and it sounded like it was a pretty physically difficult task that you were doing. But I just wanted to say, is there, you guys make us so proud. You guys make us so proud because you represent the people that, you know, we try to tell our citizens that these are just people who need a hand up, who really need some extra help along the way, and if we can help them, and now you're helping us as well as us helping you, that you're like the prime examples of how we encourage compassion in the community with people who don't know you personally and don't know that you all are individuals and that you all, you know, have different needs and abilities. And so you really are helping us. And I just wanted to say one thing about, we have a campaign where we discourage people from giving directly to the homeless because then some of them, we can't get them to go to our homeless shelter, and we can't get them to interact with us because they're being given meals and things like that. But I wanted to tell everybody in Newport Beach that it's different with these people because, you know, I brought donuts one day and they loved that, but, I mean, you can take water bottles to these people and you can say thank you to them. The yellow shirts and the teal-blue shirts are the ones that are doing this project with our, with Trellis and with our homeless center. So don't hesitate as a community to say thank you to these people and do whatever you can that makes it easier for them because they are really a prime example of how this works the way it's supposed to. Thank you so much, Terry.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Public comments on agenda and nine agenda items, please come forward. Thank you.
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. As you know, the Newport Beach Municipal Code is your primary statement of policy from you to the public and the city staff. And I'm sure it comes as no surprise to you that our municipal code has some dusty and seldom visited corners to it. Earlier this afternoon, you held what was apparently a public hearing on redistricting maps. It was unclear if it was properly noticed or not because the staff does not have a lot of guidance as to how things should be noticed if they're not part of the planning code. The guidance that they do have in the municipal code is Section 1.08.100, entitled Posting of Public Notices. This is the only direction that they officially have from you as to how the public should be noticed when you want them to come here and know that you're holding a hearing. And it says that when posting of, when public, posting of a notice in a public place is required, such notice shall be posted on the bulletin board of the City Hall. Now, that, which has not been revised since 1972, worked fine when the City Hall was at 3,300 Newport Boulevard, and it actually had a physical bulletin board outside where people could come and see the notices of hearings that were to be held. But since we moved here in 2013, we don't have a bulletin board anymore. So the staff, I'm sure, is a little puzzled what they're supposed to do when they're told to post notices. They do some on the internet. We have a kind of electronic kiosk out here in the lobby of this building, but it doesn't really count even for Brown Act notices because it's not interactive. You can't pull up the notice you want to look at. We have a binder. Sometimes we post things at the public library. I think this direction from you to the staff as to how you want your hearings to be noticed could stand some revision, which it has not had since 1972. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, please come forward. And any other speakers, please approach.
Good afternoon. My name is Walter Starr. I'm here to talk about the charter change, which is on the ballot in June. The map issue that you're facing right now is a piece of cake compared to what will be in front of the City Council in 2024 if the charter is changed. You're going to have to take seven districts and make six, which means you're going to have to change almost all the boundaries. So it's like a game of musical chairs in which you've got seven folks and you're only going to have six. But it's even worse than that because you're going to have people at that point who are about to run for mayor. You're going to have people who are about to run for city council. So you're really going to have more like a dozen people looking at those six chairs. And if you think that the drawing of the boundaries will not be done in a way to benefit some of those candidates, I think you're fooling yourselves. So, if the, you know, the new mayor was a great thing, you might be willing to live with that. But the new mayor, in my view, is going to be a bad thing. It's going to be a bad thing because that person is going to have too much power. Four years, maybe eight years, complete, essentially complete, control of the agenda, de facto, control of the City Council. So, urge all those up there, all those listening, vote no on the charter change in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. If you intend to speak on this item, please come forward, we're running a little late.
Mr. Mayor, since that may be a constant theme of public comment at some point or another, could we have the city attorney weigh in on whether it's appropriate to tell people how to vote?
Yeah, so that's not appropriate to tell people how to vote. You can come and have general discussion about items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, but you cannot advocate and use public resources for or against a measure. So, please keep that in mind if you come back.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Curran. I'd like to comment. First of all, the city's rolling out a new trash collection program. It includes an element for managing green waste and reducing the amount of food waste that goes into your, into our waste system. And I just wanted to note that the Environmental Nature Center is putting on a seminar on February 26 on composting, and you will even get a composting bucket. So Lori Whelan, the executive director, and I were talking, and I said, you know, ENC could show people how to completely eliminate the need for the little bucket that you carry out to your trash can and compost your waste at home and reuse it on your native plants. So I want to share that. The other item I wanted to bring up is there is an outstanding issue that I've been talking with staff about, and that is that we have an integral facility at Miramar Recovery, which has two drug and alcohol licensed facilities, which operate with characteristics of an integral facility. And this, we've seen acknowledged multiple times, including by the state. And one of the things I've brought up to staff is that the owner of Miramar Recovery is Derek Bryan, as stated by the Department of Healthcare Services. However, there is an individual named Tom Sauer who says he's, who has told our staff that he's the manager, but is saying in public comment and in state meetings that he's the owner. We've asked for this to be investigated because it's really important that the person who operates a drug and alcohol facility where families spend $30,000 to $40,000 a month to send their children, or we as taxpayers who spend that money, that the person who owns the license is also the person providing services. But in this case, it's not clear who is providing those services. So we've all tried to find out from DHCS. My question to staff here is, we are doing code enforcement. Miramar has actually been cited the last four weeks for overstuffed trash cans, and Monique Navaret can share the photos with you. Have we ever gone to Miramar, Derek Bryan, directly in the last year and said, "Hi, we have conflicting information about the ownership. Transfer of ownership without a license change is not allowed. Please show us your license and please show us the verification of who the owner is." That would solve the issue. So that's my question. Have we ever made that question and have we been successful?
This is not the time to ask questions of staff, but I'm sure Mr. Hart will talk to you. No, no. Thank you. Or you have three minutes to want to talk more?
And finally, I think Be Well is a wonderful program. As residents who are affected by this issue of Department of Healthcare Facilities and Department of Social Services facilities acting integrally with social services, mental health, drug and alcohol rehab facilities, and making our city a destination known around the nation, we would like to see the same level of expertise and resources applied to these programs as we're providing for other mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to that composting breakdown. Any other comments? Seeing none. Mr. Hart, do you have a closed session report, or closed session announcement, I should say?
Yes, Mayor Muldoon. The City Council adjourned a closed session to meet with the city's labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the Newport Beach Police Management Association, as well as the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Life Guards. And that's all that's set forth on the agenda under item 4A. Thank you.
Thank you. We are recessed until 10:00 after 6:00. Call the meeting to order for the February 8, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. Hart, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. This evening, we have an invocation by Dr. Ahmed Sobob, I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly, from the Islamic Shura Council of Southern California. Doctor?
Our Lord, we ask you to guide us among those whom you've guided. We ask you to protect us among those whom you've protected. We ask you to bless us among those whom you've blessed. We ask you to give us the wisdom and the strength to make the correct decisions for our city and our citizens. We ask you to make us among those who are brave and have the courage to speak truth against injustice. We ask you to make us among those who are sincere and have the genuine desire to serve the city of Newport Beach. Amen.
Thank you, doctor. Councilman Dixon, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please place your hand over your heart and begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The city of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Council announcements or reports from council members on council, on committee activities, and also council member items wished to be placed on the future agenda. Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you. Was able to attend a ACCO C infrastructure presentation with our city manager, which was very informative. We have an upcoming TCA board meeting. It'll be the first that I get to chair for the San Joaquin Hills Board. We thank you very much to staff, in particular our finance department, for the discussion at the planning session this past, the past Saturday. I was able to speak with Costa Mesa Brief about SB 8, SB 9, and SB 10, and so I appreciated the opportunity to speak on those important issues. Our Pacificer Christian High School here in Newport Beach had a declamations contest on Friday night. I was able to judge that, and when you get to judge an event like that, you have renewed hope, seeing such impressive young people. And so that was amazing. And then council member Dixon and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting for their new building on Saturday. On Sunday, I was able to attend and represent the city at an Eagle Scout, young boys becoming Eagle Scouts presentation. And again, one of those times where it certainly renews hope. Yesterday, I gave blood at the American Legion, so I want to say thank you to the American Legion and also remind everyone that there is an extraordinary blood shortage right now, so if you have the opportunity to donate blood, please do so. There's plenty of opportunities, certainly through the Red Cross. And last but not least, tomorrow, we have a finance committee meeting at 3:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield.
I would just like to point out, in my district, in the Santa Ana Heights area, we're working hard with rehab homes and the issues that are going on there, it's ongoing. I just wanted to make sure we, everyone knows our ad hoc committee is hard at work. Thanks. And we have a, well, we'll post that later, but we have a good meeting coming up for the public in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, a couple of important meetings to all of our cities in Orange County. I serve on the board of the OCCOG, which is the Orange County Council of Government, and SCAG, the Regional Council of SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments. And some important decisions were made by both organizations to communicate with Housing and Community Development, HCD, who's responsible for our housing element that we'll be discussing or at least voting on today. And both regional and county boards have written a letter, and I'll ask Mr. Juerges, where's Mr. Juerges, to come forward and talk about this communication. It was written yesterday. It's a very important communication that passed by a majority vote, certainly SCAG, which is significant, essentially imploring HCD to grant some relief to the fact that of the 197 jurisdictions in Southern California Association of Governments, only three have received certification status from HCD on their housing element. And the deadline, as Mr. Juerges will explain, is this week, the critical February 11 deadline, that all cities have to have their housing plans certified. And basically, this letter says this is almost a Herculean, Herculean task that is extremely difficult for all cities, including, not necessarily including Newport Beach, because we're going to be getting our plan in on time. But there's not enough staff, not enough guidelines from HCD have not even been published, and so everybody's working against these moving targets. So I will ask Mr. Juerges to talk about this letter, but it's really an important letter where all the cities have come together and said, not to oppose it, just give some relief. So if you want to just explain this a little bit more.
Certainly, Councilmember Dixon. So, the letter's focusing on an Assembly Bill 1398. And what that bill does, for a city like Newport Beach, if we don't have substantial compliance with our housing element laws by February 11th, so today's the 8th, so in three days, we all are subject to AB 1398. And what does that mean? Is that if you adopt that housing element this evening, you have to implement everything in that housing element by October. And so there's no guidance from HCD. It's an impossible task for an agency like Newport because we have green light, we're not going to get this done with green light. So this OCAG letter to HCD was, first of all, you need to provide some guidance to the cities, because cities don't know what any of this means, and they're not provide, HCD is not providing any guidance to the cities. Plus, you need to staff up. If you want everybody to turn in their housing element by February 11th, you need to staff up, you need to hire more staff, and they're not doing that. Provide a webinar to the city so they can explain what's going on to us. And they've also asked for at least a six-month extension. Instead of October, push it out another six months. And that's going to be a question for Newport. We have done a phenomenal job putting together this housing element that we'll share with you this evening. This is the third version. We've answered all their questions. We've put all the housing in there. We don't know if we're going to be compliant.
We don't know if we're going to be compliant or not compliant. We think we've done everything they've asked, but we have no guidance from HCD, and that's what this letter's asking for, more guidance.
So we haven't heard of any response yet, but at least we were going on record.
Correct.
So thank you, Mr. Juerges. Also, some future meetings. Aviation Committee will be meeting February twenty-eighth in person, so at five o'clock. I think it's at five o'clock. It's Tara, yes. I'm looking at Tara Finnegan. And something new and different, Councilmember Brenner and I will be hosting a joint town hall on Thursday, March third, at, also at five o'clock. Many issues in our respective districts are the same on, in terms of visitor-serving issues, public works, development, a lot of issues that we deal with, that staff is dealing with, so dealing with simultaneously or in parallel, so it's good that we could kind of save staff time and have a good audience of citizens, residents of both districts to hear what's going on respectively. The town hall will be by Zoom, so that's not in person. That will be by Zoom. And that is okay. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner.
Just to tag on to that a little bit, we were both looking for town hall dates with staff, and we realized that so many of our issues are the same in our districts, and because this is a Zoom meeting, it's easy for everyone to attend and save staff time. In fact, anyone in the city of Newport Beach can Zoom into this meeting, because a lot of the things are things that other people in other districts are interested in as well, and so you'll get more answers through this Zoom meeting. It's just such an easy process that we decided to combine efforts there. The other thing I wanted to say is that in, on February the seventeenth, CDM Residents' Association has their morning seven thirty A. M. board meeting. They are meeting in person, and they are meeting in Oasis, and it's going to be a presentation entirely about the Be Well Van and the program with mental health that we're going to be starting here in the city. And, you know, we'll get, have time to get into a lot more detail about, you know, the kind of help that we can provide this. It's, homeless is obviously a top issue for so many people in our city, but this is about the mental health of all the people in our city, and whether it's teenagers that have mental health issues, or seniors that have mental health issues, or young parents that have mental health issues. They're going to be talking about how this service will be available to benefit anyone in our city that has mental health issues. And let's see, and I did speak to the Exchange Club last week and fill them in on all the different things that I know about, and I also had a chance to thank them for their Avenue of Flags that they do every year for us, which I think is just one of the most patriotic things that we have happen in our city. So anyway, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with the rest of the council, I attended the planning council, the City Council Planning Session last Saturday, January twenty-ninth, and also attended the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Blum.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a utterly exciting meeting on Balboa Island coming on Saturday to discuss everyone's favorite topic, benches, just shy of trees. It'll be very informative of a number of city staff there going over our, our wonderful choices and kind of what the island would like. We'll discuss other things as well, so if you're bored and want to come hang out at the fire station, eat some donuts and drink some coffee, make your way down there, we'll all, we'll all hang out on a Saturday morning. Thank you.
Sounds great. Okay, I have a quick slide, equally exciting. So the citywide rollout of organic recycling is now underway. Last week, CRNR began delivering green top organic carts, which are to be used to recycle yard waste, such as leaves and grass clippings, as well as food scraps. The cart delivery will continue at the rate of about four to five hundred a week through the end of March. As a reminder, this is a state mandated program. Again, this is not our fault. And these efforts will ensure that Newport Beach is in compliance with the new laws passed down from people hundreds of miles away in Sacramento. All of our residents should by now have received a recycling guide, which has a lot of good information about how to properly recycle organic waste. I'd also like to point out some online resources, which you can see on the screen behind me. You can visit our website to see if your trash and recycling collection day has changed, as well as street sweeping maps for the neighborhoods where sweeping days have changed. If you want to, if you want the condensed version, please visit the city's YouTube channel for a short organics recycling video. And if you want complete information about the entire program, go to NewportBeachCA.gov/recycle. Madam Clerk, please read the notes regarding the public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through seven. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Any items to pull from consent calendar or conflicts to announce, related items one through seven? Councilman O'Neil.
None.
Councilman Duffield.
Yeah, item number three for a business implication.
Greater conflict for business interest. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, I have, I have to recuse or a conflict on item number three because of personal membership.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner.
None.
Councilman Avery.
I also recuse on item three for club membership. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So Councilman Duffield's for a club as well. Mayor Potem Blum.
I have none.
And I have none myself. Mayor Potem, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion, Mayor, to move the balance of consent with the changes of the minutes, an amended staff report for item number four, and noting a recusal on item number three from Mr. Duffield, Ms. Dixon, and Mr. Avery.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Duffield. Public comments on consent calendars, one through seven, please come forward now. Yes. That's great. Okay, so seeing no comments on this side, and bring it back to the podium. I know request to speak from the, I'm sorry, from the dais, no request to speak. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash four, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending section seventeen point zero one point zero three zero and section seventeen point sixty point zero four zero of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to delete vessel length requirements and clarify approval responsibility for the multiple vessel mooring system and to require compliance with applicable, applicable plans and specifications. Councilmember Avery, with Councilmember Avery abstaining, the motion carries six one.
Okay, great. Now moving on to public comments and non-agenda items, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Claudia Connor, and it's really difficult to be here, but I build the courage to come here and, because I'm a resident for thirty-five years. I moved here from Pomona and looking for better things and a safer, safer city. And I just want to say that in the last couple of years, I'm not feeling safe anymore, and going to the grocery store is not the same. People just walk in and steal in front of you, and the owners cannot do anything. And it, I don't feel safe going at night, for sure. Bristol Farm, Bayside Pavilions, they both have been robbed often. And I was driving down, and one of these mentally unstable gentlemen, which I feel for, I'm a psychologist and a physical therapist as well, was having an episode, and I happened to stop right next to him, and he threw a bottle at my car. And because the lady in front of me froze, luckily I had the window up and nothing happened, and just don't feel safe anymore. And people are coming down to our city to ask for money, and they get money, they do drugs, and then they're passed out in the street outside my house, or anybody to see our childrens, to see this. And I hope we can create a program that this repeated offenders that come to do drugs to the city can be just putting programs, so they're not keep on coming to do drugs and inject themselves in front of us. I, I just never seen that before, and now I'm seeing it in our city. And I just want, hopefully, that all our money goes to help these people and not to take any, too many people from other cities, because we have the resources. So hopefully, you can find a way that we can sort out people that really belong to our city and need our, our money to help them, and the people that need to get the other cities to help them with their mental issues and homelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else wishing to speak on this side, then please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Susan Skinner, and I would like to address the flawed elected mayor proposal that was put on the June two thousand twenty-two ballot by Mr. O'Neil, Mr. Blum, Mr. Muldoon, and Mr. Duffield. Specifically, I would like to call out the ballot argument by Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Blum, which implies that the elected mayor proposal strengthens term limits when it actually severely weakens them. As with many things in politics, you have to listen very carefully to hear what is not being said, in addition to what is being said. In nineteen ninety-two, voters approved term limits allowing only two terms, or eight years, on council, but this proposal effectively erases those term limits. However, the ballot argument written by Mr. O'Neil and Mr. Blum states, quote, "This measure also places the strictest term limits in our city on the position of mayor," unquote. What the ballot argument doesn't say is that the elected mayor is allowed to serve eight years on council before running for mayor. In fact, the initiative specifically calls out that as being allowed. That means that one person can serve eight years as a council member and another eight years as mayor for a total of sixteen consecutive years on council under this proposal. Most of us think that that is far too long for one person to be in power. These changes and other even more concerning changes are probably why the Lincoln Club of Orange County is totally opposed to this proposal, as are almost all former mayors, former city council members, and former city managers from Newport Beach. To those who are listening to this meeting, please plan to vote no on this proposal in the June two thousand twenty-two election.
I'm going to have to stop you right there. We're not allow, we're not allowing anyone to, to basically say vote yes or vote no for, for propositions or ballot measures, or to, you know, vote for a candidate or not vote for a candidate.
So I'll just finish, and it doesn't say anything more. The changes put into place by this measure can only be unwound by another vote of the people, so we will get with this initiative, will be with us for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the item number eight. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon, City Councilmember Simone Juerges, your Community Development Director. With me, I have Deputy Director Jim Campbell, and over on the other side, Senior Planner Ben Zadiva, plus we have our consultants, David Barquest and Dana Privet. This is a pretty bittersweet moment. We never really wanted to come to the City Council and ask you to approve a housing element that's going to have an enormous amount of housing units planned for the city. This is not something that we ever thought we would have to be in front of you to do. Usually, housing elements are a hundred units, few hundred units. Our last housing cycle was only five. This, this, eight years later, it's close to five thousand, and to plan for all those affordable units in the city, it's, you know, the, the amount of housing units is, is approaching eleven thousand units now. Again, we don't do this lightly. We, we do, we don't like being in front of the council and asking you to approve this housing element. And I know this is not the, the moment, this is not the time when you wanted to be on council and do something like this. But this is what, this is all because of the state. This has nothing to do with the city, and we've put a lot of work just to show compliance. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it to Mr. Campbell. We have about ten slides, and I think it would be appropriate that we just kind of go through the, the quick presentation and just look for your guidance in, in approving this, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Mayor and City Councilmembers, we are asking that the City Council adopt the updated housing element. This is in response to the unprecedented RENA allocation that Simone mentioned of roughly forty-eight hundred units. Just want to touch base real quickly on the outreach and engagement. We've got all these numbers up on the slide. These are the numbers of community meetings that we held over the last two and a half years to kind of get to this point. So the housing element update, there really is four sections, introduction, community profile, the resources and constraints, and relating to affirmatively furthering fair housing, that's what AFFH stands for. And we have the housing plan, which is where the policies are. These are the action statements that we will be implementing over the next couple of years. So within all of that is also supported by the four appendices, the past performance. This is the city self-assessment of our, of our progress over the last eight-year planning cycle. We have an adequate sites analysis. This is where the lion's share of the committee work that was done to identify sites throughout the community that would support housing in the future. And then we have a community engagement summary that is quite lengthy, and then we have an appendix related to accessory dwelling units, and that is actually part of, you know, the implementation, if you will, of some of the policies to encourage the production of accessory dwelling units. Okay, moving forward, in section four, that housing plan, so there are these policy actions, as I mentioned, so within policy actions, one A through one G, these relate to those various focus areas, the airport area, Newport Center, Coyote Canyon, West Newport Mesa, and the Dover West Cliff area. We did have Banning Ranch in there. We did bring this to your attention at a previous study session recently, so the Banning Ranch is still in there as a housing opportunity, but we're not counting it towards RENA. So those units were reallocated to those other areas based on the feedback we got at the prior study session. The policy actions, one H through J, are really that incentivization of, where the city would incentivize people to construct accessory dwelling units, and those would count towards our, a portion of those would count towards production of affordable housing. So policy action one K is inclusionary housing, so that we've got a policy in there to establish an interim policy, then a follow-up future policy. We'll be bringing that back to the City Council in March. We have a prioritization for senior housing, because those typically are a higher percentage of affordable units in those projects, and that would help us meet our unmet RENA goal and maybe reduce our future rezones that we might have to go through. So policy actions three A through B are relating to changing our zoning provisions to, to basically require projects without discretionary review. Policy action four A relates to, again, affirmatively furthering fair housing and eliminating any forms of discrimination in our policy guidance. And policy actions seven A and seven D, again, is supportive of housing for the disabled or other different groups. And so all of these policy actions are there. We will be implementing those over the next three years. So there's our housing plan, which you'll notice, those are the various focus areas that we've spoken about in the past. You'll see the Banning Ranch units there in red. Those will not be counted towards meeting our RENA goals. Now, to the extent that we can get zoning on those properties on Banning Ranch, then that might reduce the numbers that might go into other focus areas. The, the housing provides that kind of flexibility as we go forward to implement these numbers.
And just for the council's benefit, we took those units from Banning Ranch and distributed them equally amongst the other areas in a ratio that was, remember, to, to their housing units that had been planned. So, you know, everybody got their fair share, every area got their fair share of housing units, so we didn't dump it in any specific area.
All right, so those are the numbers that, the, the target numbers that each of those policy actions to rezone those areas would achieve. Again, we have three years to implement those. Now, the, the application, and we'll discuss it in a moment here, AB thirteen ninety-eight, and whether we need to accelerate that. But again, here is the summary. Those are the numbers that you saw in the previous chart. Again, the Banning Ranch is in there, but again, it won't be counted towards meeting that RENA goal, and then you can see the total number of units down there at the bottom, and this still does provide us a small, about ten percent buffer to use as we move forward. So one of the actions that's on your agenda is the Airport Land Use Commission override. So we did take our housing plan to the Airport Land Use Commission, and the graphic that you see on your screen is those sites in the airport area that they object to. Most of those sites are now, we, we added sites that are within the sixty-five CNEL, which is a higher noise contour area where presently our policy doesn't allow for housing. So all of those green parcels, sort of in that orange color, are the, are the sites that they object to. The, the housing that's in green, that's in sort of that yellow color, are existing housing opportunities that are within our existing general plan. And so the Airport Land Use Commission did conduct a hearing. the sites that they object to. The, the housing that's in green, that's in sort of that yellow color, are existing housing opportunities that are within our existing general plan. And so the Airport Land Use Commission did conduct a hearing and they did find our plan to be inconsistent with the Airport Land Use Plan. And so the first resolution on your agenda tonight for the recommended actions is to actually override that decision. The council has that authority to do so. Again, it's really so that we can provide those opportunities in those areas. Now, in, in looking at those areas, those areas would have to be sound attenuated for those, for those folks. So they're not going to be out there completely exposed to the noise. All the interior spaces will definitely be mitigated to an acceptable level. And that's, that's definitely a mandatory item. Moving on, AB 1398, we've mentioned that several times. This is a piece of legislation that came through the process quite late and signed by the governor. It's effective January of this year. And what it does is it penalizes jurisdictions that don't adopt a housing element by February 11th that has been found to be compliant with state housing law. At this point in time, our housing element is still really a draft. We're going to adopt it and submit it by the deadline, but we will not have that certification letter from the state of California. And so we really need to assume that AB 1398 would apply to us unless there's possibly a delay or other changes in state legislation. What that really does is it means we have to implement those rezone programs by October 15th of 2022. And as Simone indicated, doing so with our charter is quite challenging. In fact, you know, we really won't be able to get it done by that date if it does apply. So we will obviously work diligently to get these things accomplished over the next several years. And we're going to have to obviously work with HCD and their enforcement group to hopefully, you know, work collaboratively to get this done as fast as we possibly can, but hopefully without any kind of penalties. Real quick on the status of the region. I know we spoke a little bit about the letter from OCAG. OCAG may have updated data, but, you know, basically, the, the SCAG region of 197 jurisdictions have had two or three agencies find a compliant or get a compliant housing element by the deadline. So the, we're, we're in, in company, if you will, with all of the other agencies in our arena, I'm sorry, in our region. Orange County, zero agencies have been certified. So obviously, we're in that company. So we're not alone. Next steps. So we're asking that the council tonight conduct a public hearing, take any comments that you would have from the public. We're asking that the council adopt the two resolutions, one to override the Airport Land Use Commission, and second, to adopt the housing element. And then we'd obviously submit that before the deadline later this week. We'll file a notice of exemption from SEQA. We do have, do believe this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and that analysis is provided in your staff report. We do have the environmental consultant here if you have any questions related to that as well. So we would submit the housing element later this week and we would anticipate getting a letter back from HCD in 60 days. And we hope that that would be, that it is compliant, but we'll have to obviously wait and see. I think what you're hearing is that a lot of the criteria that HCD staff is using is a little bit subjective. And so we're hopeful to get some clarity on that. Obviously, OCAG is looking for that as well. It has been very challenging working with their staff, trying to determine how this is all going to come together. But we're hopeful that we've addressed all of their comments. So moving forward, we do definitely want to thank the Housing Element Updated Advisory Committee chaired by Larry Tucker. They put in countless hours. They looked at all of the sites in the community. They looked at what would work and what wouldn't work. They spent countless hours and we want to thank them. They chaired, conducted a variety of meetings and, and we provided staff support for that. And so we want to thank their efforts in, in getting us to this point. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council if there's any questions. You know, obviously, I'm here, Simone is here. We have Mr. David Barquest of Kimbley Horn, who is the principal author of the housing element, also to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
I think we've been, oh, you do, yes. Councilman Avery.
I don't know if there's an answer to this, but what does it mean in real terms for our community? We've got those dates there, but we really don't know how much is going to be built out in that timeframe or after it, right?
So, so good point. This is an opportunity for housing. First of all, we don't have the zoning for it. It hasn't been put in our land use element. The voters hasn't voted on it. Eventually, we think all this will get done at some point, say, two years out, three years out. And then it's all about the private markets. It's supply and demand. It's labor shortages, supply chains, is all that working, is interest rates too expensive? Can a developer actually acquire property or that property owner is trying to sell at such a high price that it just doesn't pencil anymore? There, there's so many factors and variables in this. When you ask me, how many units will get built in the next eight years? Well, the, the best guide I have is looking back, what did we build in the last eight years, which was about 1,600, 1,700 units. And that's probably our best metric to look forward of what's going to be built in the next eight years. That's the best we have.
And we're in a tougher position than many cities because of the land value, right?
Very, very expensive, hard to make affordable housing pencil in Newport.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been reading, I guess some architects and developers are already ready to go on the implementing SB9, which is, creates by right, an opportunity to subdivide lots into more units, rental units, affordable units, ADUs. How do we integrate that? Because there's no zoning for that, because you don't need a zoning authorization. It could be any single family residence, correct? So that can be happening as we speak now, correct?
That's correct. So SB9 does not help us with the affordable component of our housing element because it's not affordable. They're just units. We've had conversations with HCD and Coastal Commission. HCD recognizes that our coastal zone does not have an allowance for SB9, but now the Coastal Commission is sending out letters to agencies, says you need to adopt and change your local coastal plan. You have given us direction to go ahead and change the code to make it restrictive. We, we're going to, we're doing that. We're working on that right now. We're moving as fast as we can for, for properties outside the coastal zone. So we're not going to allow SB9 in the coastal zone at this time because it's not in our LCP. Outside the coastal zone, we're going to go ahead and change our code and be restrictive because you gave us that direction to do that.
Okay. Any public comments on this item? See Mr. Moser coming forward. If anyone else would like to speak on this item, please step towards the podiums now.
Thank you, Mayor Multune. Members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. First of all, the draft element that you're about to adopt, presumably, did not become available for public review until late Friday. And I have kind of a, so people probably have not read it very much and they probably will be, some may now be looking at it. So I have a somewhat trivial technical question. What has been posted online has a bunch of stuff that is underlined and stuff that is crossed out. Question one is, everything that is underlined and crossed out, are those the changes that have been made in response to the last HCD letter? And number two, some of that is in different colors. Some of it's red, some blue, some green, some purple. Do the colors mean anything? Second question I have is with response with regard to the February 11th deadline. We've heard that within 60 days from the submittal, we will hear if HCD regards this as compliant or not. The likelihood is, I think, unfortunately, it would be found uncompliant. So if it is, I would like to ask, is there, do we get any brownie points? Is there any advantage to actually adopting something before tonight, before the deadline and hearing that it's noncompliant as opposed to adopting it a week or a month from now and finding that that is noncompliant? And, oh, in response to Councilmember Avery's question, while it is true that it's up to the private market to, to build or develop what is authorized in this housing element, is it not true that if the private market does not develop what we project or allow them to develop, first of all, are there not some sanctions if it does not happen in the eight-year timeframe? And even if there are not sanctions, won't it roll over into the next cycle? So we will still have this obligation even bigger than the new one imposed on us in the next cycle. So I think there are consequences if the private market does not develop. And then finally, my main substantive comment about what I reviewed the last couple of days, which was not very thorough, is I, I really wish there had been more public debate on the many goals and policies that are being pronounced by the city staff in this document. They're far more extensive than you might have guessed from the slide that you saw. There's 30 pages of goals and policies, some of which have changed, some of which have not. None of those were actually reviewed by either of the citizen committees. The discussion before the planning commission was minimal. And so the only discussion of those has occurred here before the city council and it has not been terribly thorough. So I wish really those had been more carefully scrutinized and we knew what we're asking for. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item? Phil, do you plan to speak? No? Okay. Color coding. Who wants to take that one?
Certainly I can. The, the color of the track changes version means nothing.
Okay.
And so what those track changes are, are changes that we felt were responsive to HCD's comments from January 14th, as well as the direction from the council at the prior study session to kind of move the units around based on our, our take on Banning Ranch. So those, those are the nature of the changes that you see there. The color means nothing.
So the, and I'm guessing based on that, the words that are stricken and underlined, they probably most likely reflect changes from our own, from feedback, but also from the council. Can you make a statement about that?
Yeah, most of those changes are primarily made by staff and by the consultants to, to reflect and clarify and provide information responsive to HCD's comments. So there is some council direction in those, not necessarily the specific words, but obviously underlined is added language and stricken is, will be removed. So in essence, it's a, it's that variant. It's, it's a way to help the public and HCD understand what those changes are as they go through that review process. Obviously, we'll create a, I'm sorry, excuse me, we'll create a clean version of this when we're all through with the process.
Of course, yeah. That's a great segue, though, into who's really running this show. It's not the seven people you voted for. It really isn't even staff. It's, it's Sacramento in this instance. Councilwoman Dixon.
Just to follow up on that. So when we complete the draft of the general plan update, which will, is just getting started, so it may be, what, two years from now, I suppose, a year?
Sure, correct.
So all of the elements, which would include the housing element, will be publicly discussed. There's an opportunity for that, I'm sure, before it goes to the vote of the people.
There, there is. You are, in essence, we fast-tracked the housing element and you are, we are asking you to approve it tonight. And what you're approving is all those policies to implement those policies. So that housing element is going to be done unless we amend it in the future for whatever reason. And so now we're going to transition to the general plan update and start working through that update process.
But the entire document needs to be voted on by the people.
The, the change in land use needs to be voted on by the people, not all the elements.
Oh, all right.
So it's those housing units we're adding, or if we're going to add commercial, we're going to be, that's what, that's the development. It's not the policies in the harbor element or the policies in the recreation element. It's just going to be the development potential.
Well, to Mr. Moser's point about the policies, the new policies, how, what's an easy way for people to look at those new policies that we're going to be approving tonight, I presume?
So we do have it all up on our website. If you just go through the search bar on the city's portal, just type housing element. We did post it, the newest version, on Friday. It's all broken down there and anybody can go ahead and look at it. It's all available.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Breiter.
Also, to Mr. Moser's point, the question about why are we voting to approve it tonight before it's certified? Is that, is there a reason for that?
Well, we have to, HCD is going to, if we don't approve it, HCD is going to look at us like, you never adopted this. So it's not a real document. They've been working with us on the draft version, understanding that it's just draft and they're giving us comments. But at some point, they want you to take action. And that's the real document. And we have to do that before the 11th.
So in most cases, the ones that have been approved, have they voted by their council first and then, okay?
That's correct.
So that's the process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move the item. Okay, let's vote.
Can we state that this is under duress?
Yes, we can.
By all of us?
We can, yeah. Motion made by Governor Newsom, seconded by Speaker of the Senate.
Under duress, the motion carries, 7-0.
That's for the public record.
Yes.
Okay, next item, item nine, sculpture exhibition in the Civic Center Park, phase seven. Can't believe it's been seven phases.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Heatherton, your library director. I'm pleased tonight to introduce Mr. Richard Stein of Arts OC, who has served at the project manager of all, all of our phases of the sculpture exhibition in the park. Tonight, he'll be presenting the 10 pieces as voted in by our residents and as well as four alternate pieces. And with him is Professor Joe Lu, Joe Lewis of UC Irvine, who will be assisting. And with that, I turn it over to Rick and Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, good evening. I'm Richard Stein and I'm the president and CEO of Arts Orange County. We are, just to refresh your memory, we're the nonprofit arts council designated and actually re-designated just today by the Orange County Board of Supervisors as its official local arts agency and state local partner with the California Arts Council. It's been a great privilege and pleasure for us to work with the city of Newport Beach on this project since 2013. And prior to that, we had worked with the city on its master arts plan. So a reminder to what our role is, this is not our exhibition, this is your exhibition. These are not our selections, these are the selections of the people of Newport Beach. What we do is we put out a call for artists far and wide. And as the reputation of the program has grown, we've gotten more submissions and better submissions. And the city arts commission then has an opportunity to determine whether these works meet the baseline minimum requirements that are stated in the program. And this year, for the first time, it was put out to the residents of Newport Beach to make the final choices and rankings. And that went back to the city arts commission just for their review and to recommend to you tonight. So we have 10 works of art that were ranked the highest for the 10 slots. There are four alternates. We have on rare occasion needed to dip into an alternate. The most famous story is the time when the artist, the Boston artist, thought that this was Newport Rhode Island and he had not budgeted to ship his work all the way out to the West Coast. So we've had a few little things like that happen over the years. But by and large, most of the artists who are ranked highest are installed. And we also have a window of time that we need to work within. After tonight, we go right to work with the contracting phase, which can take quite, quite a long time. And to guide and work with the artists on their shipments and deliveries. And the installation will take place in the first week of June. At the same time, we'll be deinstalling phase five works, which will have come to the end of their two-year exhibition period. There's greater detail in the staff report that's been presented to you. And I don't think we need to spend time with all the facts and figures of it, but I would like to walk you through the works on display. But first, let me just introduce again my team members who are here. So Professor Joe Lewis, a professor of art at University of California Irvine, who is himself a public artist and a public art expert. Joe? And Joe has been with us for several years on the project. And Nicholas Thirkettle, who is our program coordinator at Arts Orange County and has worked on this almost from the beginning as well. And he handles the, all of the logistics and works with the artists in terms of their submissions. Joe works with them and coordinates with our installation firm, which is called Art Installation Remedies up in Santa Ana, which is responsible for when necessary installing concrete pads, bringing in cranes, bringing in forklifts. Some of the works are quite complicated to install. So I think without further ado, let's walk you through the sculptures. First of all, this is the map. As soon as the phase five works are removed in June, the phase six that were installed last June will remain. And then we will be adding to them. So So this is Craig West's, Craig Gray's A Novel Idea. He's a past exhibitor. He had the Popsicles and the Slices of Heaven, very popular, and this is a work that is a granite bench, and will have custom carved names on the book spines. This is the location that's been designated for it. The site location selection was a process that involved our team members and members of the arts, city arts commission, as well as city staff, to determine the optimal locations. This is Got Juice. In its honor, I'm wearing my orange tie, and this is by Stephen Landis from Loveland, Colorado, fiberglass steel and concrete, and this is the proposed location. That's where the due descending currently is, and that is going to be leaving. Tyler Burton's The Archaeology of the Everyday. This is a really wonderful piece composed of recycled materials, and a very unique and colorful piece. And here is its location, and we'll be showing you the map where all of these are located as well. Miggy Buck in New York has crafted the feet of Michelangelo's David for display, and very unique and fascinating, and certainly a conversation piece, beautifully crafted, cement and steel, and this will be in, in full view of quite a bit of the park. Joe Forsackett, who's due descending, is leaving. Submitted another work that was very popular with the residents, and it's Eve. And this is, in his characteristic style, the painted steel plates in a circle of women. And this would be placed where the unbearable lightness of being currently is, the red bicycle wheel sculptor. Marguerite Elliott's Where Have All The Birds Gone? It's a contemporary tower with a bird's nest on top, which even has some sculpted birds in it. We'll see if they attract some fellow feathered friends. Tim Deschamps' Cross Section. This is a smaller work, and so it will be mounted on a pedestal where I'm Listening Currently is exhibited on the other side of San Joaquin. And this has been exhibited, this is Prey by Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson. They, they don't use their individual names, they go by Mr. and Mrs. Ferguson. And this is entirely made of coins, but it's on a structural frame that they've provided, you know, the structural engineering on, for us to take a look at. And that will replace the, what was the name of the? Fractured Piece by Nancy Muslin, which are those arches, the colorful arches, and on the knoll up there. It kind of deserves its own space, some room around it. And it's made of, I think I said, coins. Kirk Cese's Pluma Sculptura, aka The Feather. And this is popular in a number of cities, it's exhibited, and this will be where we currently have the Marble Shooter. And then Pathway Parabola, this is one of the few, you know, purely abstract works in the show, and it's intriguing, and it will go where Seated Diana was located previously. And here's the maps, so you can see how they're spread out at various sites. Really, all of the sites have been used previously for sculptures in the program. We've not had to create any new sites for this particular phase. And so when, when you have all 20 on display, you'll see it's a very robust group of sculptures. And again, I think it's proven to be very popular with the public. It's, there isn't a day that I don't come to the park when I don't see families with children who are really intrigued by and engaging with the works. Some they don't understand, some are very obvious and delightful, such as the butterflies on the hill, which has, has proven to be very popular. And so it's, it's a very successful program, and you should be very proud of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Councilwoman Dixon.
Yes, so thank you, and congratulations. I mean, the seventh installment is really remarkable, and it's been, I agree with you, we all are here all the time and we see people traversing into the sculpture garden. I do have a question. First of all, I want to compliment our arts commission and all of you and how you've organized this, and this is the first grouping that we've really gone entirely 100% to the community to vote on this selection, instead of pre-selecting them. Now they're 100% selected. I think that's fantastic, so I think they, the people chose well. I noticed, though, in the artists, we're still dealing with a majority of artists that come from out of state or outside California, certainly all of them are outside of Southern California. What can we do to encourage more local or California-based artists? Do you have, have you thought, I'm sure you've thought about this, what could we do differently?
Budget more money.
Oh, really? Are California artists more expensive?
Well, it certainly is more costly to live in California than in Missouri, so that's, that's one possibility. And yes, I think that's, that's, you know, we've distributed the call to artists to, you know, well over 100,000 artists nationwide, and I think that it's, that there are a limited number of sculptors, you know, in the universe of artists, and then among them, many of them only do commissions and have a backlog of commissions for permanent sales, and so there aren't many who have an inventory of works that are primarily used to submit to temporary sculptural exhibitions. And there aren't that many temporary sculptural exhibitions around either. So it isn't a huge market just waiting for all of these artists to submit to. So I think that that's part of it as well.
Well, I guess just going forward, I think we have an excellent program, but I would think, as you did by incorporating the university of residents to vote on this, if there are other structural improvements to our program, to get different kinds of participation. But just listening to you, I see that there are built-in constraints because it's temporary and maybe the California cost of living, but then we don't have the higher cost of shipping out here, perhaps, that maybe offset that. But anyway, just to always look to ways that we can continually refresh it and make it a little bit different, but still attract the quality art that you've been attracting. So, good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, so Arlene and I have talked a little bit about this, and that we both thought we were going to be able to vote on all 10 sculptures. So I don't know, we're not sure where that changed in the process, but is that the intention for next year, that the public will be able to vote on all 10 sculptures?
Well, we weren't aware that that was the desire, but we certainly can plan for that.
We only voted, we were only allowed to vote for three, so...
Three votes, you were able to vote for the entire pool of 25.
Out of the whole pool.
Out of the whole pool.
But we chose three.
But you were asked to choose three.
Yes.
So you're asking if residents can choose 10.
If we could have 10, if the public could vote on 10 next year, or next time, so that...
Possible.
So that we would at least know what the top 10 favorites, because we really only know, you know, for instance, if the majority of people voted for the same three sculptures, we don't know how they felt about the other sculptures. So I think that's a really important consideration, for me anyway, and I don't know whether it was operator error, or whether it's because I'm on a Mac, but I had a hard time getting the pictures of the sculptures to open up and then get back, it kept kicking me out and then I had to get back in and start from the, yeah, it was, it was difficult for me. Now, it may have been me, but it, but it really should be very simple for people to be able to click on each one of the submissions and, and go down the line and see them.
We'll troubleshoot that, for sure.
Okay, yeah, so, and it may just have been me, but I don't think so. So, anyway, and then the other thing that I've spoken to Mrs. Greer about is that I would love it if, and perhaps this could address the issue that you were talking about, about not having as many California artists submit as we would like, if we had a program in conjunction with the Newport Beach Foundation, where when there are pieces that our entire community really likes, like the, a novel idea that was highly rated, most highly rated of this group, but other ones that, you know, through the time they're on display, the community indicates that they really like this, they see it as emblematic of Newport Beach, and they would like it to be a permanent piece here, that if they knew that our arts foundation and our arts commission was looking forward to finding pieces that we would like to have actually purchased as our own, then maybe that would incentivize local artists to do more.
We, there was, of course, the sphere was permanently acquired from the first phase exhibition, and more recently, the chairman of the board was donated by the artist to the city of Newport Beach. And then there was, under consideration, the burnt matchstick as well. There was a lot of interest in that particular work and trying to acquire it permanently, but it would have had to be moved, and it would have turned out to be too costly. But we do include information in our call for artists that permanent acquisition has occurred, and also works have been sold to third parties that have been exhibited here in order to help incentivize it. But, you know, maybe we can make that more prominent in our call for artists so that artists see that opportunity a little more clearly.
I'm glad to hear that chairman of the board was donated. It's such a clever use of play on words with where we are and chairman of the board. We have so many CEOs and chairmans of the board here that it just really is a fitting piece to have in our city, so that's nice to hear.
And don't forget Frank Sinatra.
Thanks, Frank. He's the ultimate chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm guessing that's the end of the presentation?
That's it.
Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Comments from the public, please come forward.
Mayor Mottu, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding voting systems, you know I am fond of variations on voting systems. In addition to, or as an alternative to asking people to choose all 10 that they would like, I have suggested the arts commission, and perhaps you would want to consider for the next phase, another voting system that would really be easy for the public and might be more informative, would be to have them vote on every piece that is in there and rank them from really like to really hate, maybe a scale of one to five, and then the Arts OC people can get the ones that have the top ranking, and least offensive to people and most popular. That's another alternative. I did want to mention specifically, in the current voting, the people saw this one, the one that was the, the bird nest on a tower, saw a picture, it looked like it lighted up, like the burnt matchstick that we had here before. I wanted to clarify for you and the public, I don't believe it actually lights up, it was, the picture was taken at night with floodlights on it, and I think there is no proposal to do that here. And then I had one other important comment, but I didn't write it down, so I don't remember what I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. One of my more favorite Jim Mosher ideas. Any other comments? Arlene? Okay. Okay, great.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your support of the arts commission and for our programming and for phases one through six. It's been amazing. This has been an ever-evolving process from the very beginning. We just had three members of the arts commission at the first two phases, and two professional curators. The rest of the, the arts commission sort of rubber-stamped what the others had selected. So when I became the chair in 2015, I felt that we should open it up and bring it to the entire commission and invite the community to come in and hear about the sculpture that's being considered, and it's been quite popular doing it that way. And taking it to the next step, I was a little skeptical at first about the public choosing sculptures. It has worked out beautifully. When it came time for us to vote on the commission as to any that might be pulled, we ended up with so many, the majority, and we're really pleased that it turned out the way they did. And the public selected, as it were, very consistent with what the commission would have selected. So it is nice to have the public's input, it's nice to have sculpture in the garden that's engaging. So many of the works that you saw, you know, that have been presented, Prey, children really are engaged by it. The bird's feathers are made of pennies, so it's really going to engage the children when they come into the sculpture garden, and it's so big that you feel that you are prey when you walk into the garden and you're standing underneath that huge bird. And the same with some of the other, Eve by Forsackett. The, the one sculpture that was basically, is a wave, let's see. David, also, the, the feet are just going to be amazing. There'll be many photo opportunities for the, for the kids in our community, families and the like. But the cross section is actually the cross section of a wave, so it's very thematic that our community is so, is a coastal community, and we've chosen things that we felt that we approved the, the public's selections, and we didn't move anything out, because the public selected things that they felt really, they identified with in the community. So I think this has been a really good process that you suggested, and I want to thank you for that. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of the city arts commission for all the, the support that you've given us in the past. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And asking about more California artists, I think we should really structure some sort of an event to open the entire sculpture garden for the day, or be more aggressive in how we have presented our opening day, and really reach out to artists in the Southern California greater area, inviting them to come that day and meet the artists who are in the sculpture garden, have their sculpture there the opening day, and we often invite previous artists who have exhibited in the sculpture garden. So I would suggest that we be more aggressive in our publicity and marketing, and making sure we bring those people into the community, because when they get here and they see the sculpture garden, I can't imagine any artist would not, regardless of the honorary and being inspired, to want to present something for submission to the city of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Yeah, this has been going on for a good while, and I would just like to commend the arts commission and those folks that have helped bring this along. And it just strikes me that an awful lot of effort goes into rotating exhibit like this. The pieces are complicated, they're valuable, they're heavy, and just the logistics and all the communication between folks and just, just the constant effort, and I think it's, it's yielding great things for folks in our city. It adds a certain pizzazz to our city hall site here, and I'm just really pleased about it, frankly. And I think this last iteration is exceptional.
Thank you. I think I'll, I'll take that back to the commissioners, they'll be pleased. But I would like to remind you... But I would like to remind you also that during, throughout the pandemic, we've had the gift that never stops giving. Our open-air museum and having people come to our city to visit the sculpture garden really provided a place for people all over the county and afar to come here, not only the people who live here, and recreate in the sculpture garden. So thank you. I think that we have the ideal arts program. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one quick comment. Just, it's in the staff report, but just a reminder or thank you to the Arts Foundation, because they're fundraising. Another example in our community of a public-private partnership. So they make a modest but significant contribution, I think $10,000?
Actually, it was...
Twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, excuse me, even more.
Yes.
So, fantastic. So I love the fact that the Arts Foundation, over the years, has really taken on that role of raising funds. And this is a wonderful project to do that for. So thank you for that. Could you just explain to me why you went to the voting, just the top three? Explain the logic behind that.
Well, when we were in our meeting of the City Arts Commission, we were very concerned, and we can work this out, and it's a work in progress, how we've been voting all along. We were very concerned that we would lose people totally after the three, that they, and they may not, they may just not vote for any. We were really concerned about that. We want, it's just, you have people's attention for only so long. And maybe, I'm just thinking, maybe if we were to present the sculpture with all of the sculpture like a large card, that very much that you could look at everything and then zero in and click on particular sculptures that you might be able to see closer, that might be a suggestion. In other words, you might have 30 up there on each card, and then you have the opportunity, as a viewer, to zero in and focus in on one particular sculpture and then be able to cast your votes. I'm sure that Arts OC will figure out some way to be able to engage with more votes with, for the sculptures from the public.
Because I think just voting for 10 would be more constructive. All right, having said that, I'd like to make the motion to support, what are we doing, is a Phase Seven of the Arts Sculpture Garden exhibit. So thank you.
Thank you.
Second by Councilwoman Brenner. Thank you, Ms. Greer. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you, yes. Okay, staff.
Forward to opening day.
Oh, that's right.
Good evening, Mayor Meldune, council members. I'm obligated under state law to provide a brief summary of the employment agreements that are proposed for the two chiefs. And fortunately, there are a lot of similarities, which I'll go over first. Both of the agreements call for the following: four-year terms with an ending date of December 30, 2025; one-time deferred compensation in the amount of $2,000; a salary adjustment of 2% effective July 1, 2022; and then effective July 1, 2023 and thereafter. Their cost of living and salary range adjustments will be tied to their respective safety management group's salary adjustments. There are a few differences. The police chief will receive a salary increase of 1.5% effective January 1, 2023, and will be brought to the top of the salary range in January of 2024, which is estimated to be approximately a 1.6% adjustment. The fire chief will receive a salary increase of 1.43% effective January 1, 2023, and will be brought to the top of the salary range in January 2024. That figure is estimated to be approximately 1%. And that's my summary. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, coming back to DIAS, I don't see any requests to speak. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mayor Proton Blom.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mayor Proton Blom, seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.